The Royal Commission is now in session.
Ms Eastman, I understand that the hearing room in Adelaide has been cleared and this is in private session, is that right?
No, quite the opposite. I think there was a misunderstanding that there would be a private session this morning. Those matters have been resolved, so we're ready to recommence with Ms Boswell.
That is very good news, all right, thank you.
So we're ready to commence when you are Chair.
Yeah, I'm just waiting Ms Boswell's come up on a smallish screen, I'm hoping we can get Ms Boswell on the
She's definitely here.
Bigger screen.
Preferably not.
In any event, that's fine. Now Ms Boswell is on the bigger screen, thank you, we can see you. And thank you for returning to the Royal Commission, Ms Eastman will continue asking you questions, thank you.
Chair, and I know we've sort of out a little bit of order, but whether or not you wanted to just introduce the morning in terms of the acknowledgement of country.
Yes, I shall, I'll do that, thank you for reminding me. We want to acknowledge the Ghanar people of the Adelaide Plains, the traditional custodians of the land upon which the Royal Commission is holding the hearing in Adelaide this week, and we wish to pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also acknowledge the Getigal people of the Eora nation upon whose lands Commissioner McKeown and I are participating in this hearing, and the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nation from whose lands Mrs Bennet of Council is appearing in Melbourne. I pay, we pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also pay our respects to all First Nations people who are attending the hearing in Adelaide in person today, as well as those who may be viewing the hearing on the live stream. Thank you, Ms Eastman.
Thank you, thank you, Ms Boswell. The affirmation you made yesterday continues. Now, there's two things I'm told that you want to correct from yesterday's evidence or provide information to the Royal Commission.
Yes, please.
So the first was in relation to the discussion we had yesterday about the 500 participants and how many were NDIS participants, is that right? So what would you like to tell us about that?
That's right. Of the clients in our service, and this includes in our aged care facility, 462 are NDIS participants and 80 are continuity of support participants, which means that they were over the age of 65 when the NDIS commenced.
Okay. And the second issue was that you wanted to make a correction in relation to the dollar sums in relation to the fraud control issues, is that right?
Yes, I said that I'd signed off in a letter to our external audit to general of the potential for a $10 fraud associated with client funds. I've checked my records, it's actually a $30 potential missing amount of money across all the houses in total.
Thank you for those matters. Now, when we left yesterday, we had looked at the auditors' memos and reports as part of the transition to the NDIS. And the Royal Commission asked you to prepare a part of your statement to specifically address the process of transition to the NDIS. And if you've got a copy of your second statement, which is the 19 May 2021 statement, you address this in some detail at paragraph 66 and following, is that right? Have you got that?
I have.
So what, you're on the big bundle, so if we go to tab 57 of that bundle, in bundle B, if you need a hand
And I apologise, I have brought the wrong folder with my statement, so if I may have my statement, I'm embarrassed and I'm sorry about that.
That's right. Have you got a folder where you've got a statement that you'd like to use?
I have, it's back in my office, so
All right. Why don't I ask the Office of the Solicitor of Sisting to give you a hard copy of your statement?
Thank you, I'd appreciate it.
And I can hear some activity behind me, so I assume someone's
People are trying to
Going lightning fast around the corner, all right. Well, let's see how it goes, I just want to draw your attention to paragraph 66. You've got a copy of it up on the screen as well.
Yes, I do.
Can you work with that copy?
Yes, I can.
So I don't need to ask you chapter and verse about this, but I just want to understand that when the Royal Commission asked you to give a brief description of when the NDIS commenced in South Australia, and that included the process of transition to the NDIS, including when the transition is intended to be completed, this is the, this is the total of the summary, is that right? If we look at paragraph 66 through to paragraph 78 on the following page, is that right?
I will take your word for it, it certainly goes to 77, which is what I can currently see.
Here's a hard copy, that might make it a little easier.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
That's why, Ms Boswell, you needed junior counsel, the role of junior counsel is to find the documents the senior counsel can't find.
I would clearly not qualify then, sir, I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, it is, that's correct.
And essentially, and can I just summarise, that you've described the process of entering into two bilateral agreements with the Commonwealth?
Yes.
And in paragraph 75, the in-kind arrangements must be phased out by 30 June 2023.
That's correct.
And that's provided for in the second bilateral agreement, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Now, you tell the Royal Commission that DHS is a registered provider of services under the NDIS for non-in-kind services, and it intends to be able to deliver all of its services from 1 July 2023 on a cost recovery basis. So does that mean that in terms of the DHS role, that the DHS itself is going to be subject to the NDIS regime as a registered provider? Is that the intention?
Yes, and we're about to be a registered provider for some services already very soon and be subject to that regime. It was never intended that being in-kind, when that agreement was signed, meant that the services would not be subject to the NDIS Commission regulatory scheme. The state of South Australia, well, from my perspective, we always understood that that was what was going to happen. It was in September of that same year, 2018, just after that bilateral had been signed, that the Commonwealth informed us, I think at a senior officers' meeting, that in-kind services had been determined not to actually be NDIS services under the legislation, and therefore the Commission was not able to regulate. It wasn't, it was more, I would argue, a subject of regulation and legislation that hadn't contemplated it than an intended outcome.
But becoming a registered provider under the NDIS, it's the cases in it that the DHS would be subject to the regulatory and legislative arrangements in the NDIS Act, and that includes also reports to the Quality and Safeguards Commission.
Yes, that's correct.
Now, DHS has, up to the point of transition to the NDIS, provided its services, both in terms of accommodation and supports, on a case management approach, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And so one of the impacts of transitioning to the NDIS is moving from a sort of one-stop-shop case management approach into more disparate service arrangements, is that right?
Yes.
What can you tell the Royal Commission about how you have assisted the clients who have been assisted with a case management approach, transitioning into a new model, where the department might still provide their services, but not in the case management model? What will that mean for the clients, and how have you assisted the clients prepare for that change?
So, over the last 18 months, maybe actually nearly two years, we've implemented a number of fairly significant employment change, or so, position changes in accommodation services. Are we referring only to accommodation services or to the broader rollout?
No, I think if we can, I know the broader rollout covers a range, and you've actually included those in paragraph 79 of the statement, but if we focus on the accommodation services and the residents in the accommodation services who are also provided other services and supports in terms of day-to-day living or transport or health services, whatever it might be.
So we already have, the most of the clients within our service will be accessing other NDIS services from outside our service already. We have implemented capacity building offices for all of our clients, and they're a
Sorry? What does capacity building mean? That sounds like a very sort of public service or management term, so tell me what that means.
Actually, I think it's an NDIS-style term.
But what does it actually mean if I'm a person who has relied on a case management approach? What does capacity building mean?
So we have also, we have service coordinators as well, one per 25 clients who are actually helping people access their services if they have not chosen to have a support coordinator externally. Capacity building officers are doing things like helping people meet their neighbours, understanding the NDIS, working through what they would like to access in terms of goals. And capacity building is a concept that comes, I think, out of the NDIS language. We also, in addition to the capacity building officers, we have, and the service coordinators, we also have quality and safeguarding officers across the services now. And every family or guardian and client have access to the name and the direct mobile number of their service coordinator that they can call, and they only have 25 clients per service coordinator. That's separate to the provision of services that have always existed in the houses.
And has that arrangement been in place for a period of time now, or is it still being rolled out?
I'm happy to provide the Royal Commission with the actual dates of its starting, but it was, it came out of, after a new service delivery plan that I refer to in my statement at excuse me a moment. When we talk about the new plan for accommodation services Can I, can I check the information and come back to you, but it's been, the, I think that the plan commenced in late 2019, and these officers were associated with that. That change was around the end of 2019.
Has there been any evaluation of that capacity building project so far?
We are currently in the process of an external audit for NDIS quality and safeguards. We are also surveying, or we've done two rounds of surveying all of our clients, and we're about to start surveying families. There was a, there's now regular meetings happening with families in houses on a quarterly basis, and the quality and safeguarding officers are following trends and feeding that back as well.
All right. Now, in your statement, you tell the Royal Commission that South Australia is now fully transitioned to the NDIS and addressed that issue which we've just been talking about, that the transition in terms of the in-kind arrangement also needs to be completed by June 2023, is that right?
Yes, by transition in my statement, I mean the concept of transition that was used by governments, which is that everybody was, had access to becoming an NDIS participant. That came in in phases, so when South Australia's fully transitioned, like other jurisdictions, everybody is a participant in the NDIS, but some people are getting in-kind services.
All right. Now, one matter I want to ask you about is at paragraph 97 of your statement, on page 15. And this issue has arisen for the Royal Commission over the course of this week, and that is that since July 2018, the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission has been the national regulator on quality and safeguards. And that has meant that if a person who is in DHS accommodation but also provides, receives services from a registered NDIS provider, then the fact that they receive services from an NDIS provider will give them a pathway to the Quality and Safeguards Commission, even though the Commission doesn't have jurisdiction over what may occur within the accommodation operated by DHS, is that right?
Yes.
So paragraph 97, you say, while the department does not have a direct role in safeguarding for people in receipt of services provided by the non-government sector, by that do you mean non-government sector being both registered and unregistered NDIS providers?
I think in that sense, in that paragraph, I'm primarily referring to the non-government sector that are mainly registered providers, the sector that existed pre-NDIS, and, and people who have become part of that as organisations, I think, since. And in that paragraph in particular, I go on, in the next paragraph, to specifically talk about the COVID-19
I just want to finish this paragraph.
Yep.
So, so non-government sector is a reference to, for the most part, NDIS registered providers, is that right?
Yes.
But you say that the department continues to play a leadership role within the disability sector. So I want to understand what you mean by that. If the department doesn't have a direct role in safeguarding, and you accept that that is the jurisdiction of the Quality and Safeguards Commission for NDIS registered providers, how is it that the department continues to play a leadership role within the disability sector? And what do you mean by leadership role?
So in that paragraph, I'm primarily referring to situations that have happened in terms of, COVID-19 is, is one very significant example, where we went on to provide sector forums to talk about what happened within supported independent living, and to try to assist the sector with information about the situation in COVID, as well as that we have been providing information to the sector and conversations about complex support and in terms of our role in engaging with the Commonwealth about things like complex support needs pathways or access when there is a crisis to both the state and federal systems.
Do, can we take it that leadership role means that the department and indeed the South Australian Government recognises that it cannot completely vacate the field?
Absolutely.
And is it the case that the department and the government see that it has a role as being a provider of last resort, where the safeguarding arrangements under the NDIS and the planning and funding of services under the NDIS fail?
At the moment, we do appear to be playing the role of provider of last resort, where we have some circumstances where providers are determining that they can no longer provide services to a client, and, and some quite unfortunate situations of people being social admissions to hospitals, for example, and we are acting as a provider of last resort in terms of providing accommodation services for, in those situations, and also taking on clients into our service that other services have declined to provide further service to. I cannot speak for the future policy of government about whether they intend to deliver accommodation services as a provider of last resort forever. However, in the moment, I know that that is the position, is that we have fallen back into the provider of last resort role.
Did you
Can I, can I, sorry, can I interrupt to ask a question to link what you said previously? You talked about capacity building and one officer being allocated to 25 clients. Is that something that is going to continue, as far as you know, indefinitely into the future?
That's our service coordinator rather than our capacity builders, was the 25-client ratio, but at the moment, we intend to continue delivering our services that way as an accommodation service provider. Obviously, when we move into the NDIS, our service coordinator role will need to adapt to the support coordination role in the NDIS, and people will be able to choose whether they have a support coordinator within our service, but as I know the Commission has identified
Don't just ask us to slow down.
Sorry, slow down for the interpreters, I apologise, I knew I was rushing then.
No, we've got enough time, so please, slow down.
So providing the support coordinator role under the NDIS is obviously one where people can make greater choice about who their support coordinators are. We already have people in our service who have chosen external support coordinators, and we have always, South Australia has since 2017 been very determined that people need to be released from any in-kind arrangements if they so choose. We will continue to provide those services if that's what people want, but we will also provide people option to get them from other organisations.
But as a support coordinator under NDIS, that normally involves, does it not, provision in a plan?
Yes, and I believe, Chair, that what will happen is, as all of, our plans are currently being converted to standard NDIS plans, and support coordination will be provided when the NDA says so in, in the plans, for the majority of clients within our service, well, I would suspect for all the clients within our service, there will be some support coordination provided in plans because of the nature of the clients in our service.
I understand, but I'm just trying to clarify that, and I'm not being critical in asking this question, the South Australian position would be that it would be, receive remuneration for this in the same way as any other support coordinator through funding provided by the NDA.
Yes, and that's a requirement of moving out of in-kind services. We may still choose to operate functions that are not directly billable, but that's, that we will work through, and that's because all services may choose to provide an officer that they can't directly bill that officer's time for, but is a role that they, they have within their service for purpose of quality or safeguarding or good practice.
To follow up what Ms Eastman has been asking you, and I think what I've got in the back of my mind, but it may be coming to the forefront of my mind, is how far the state has not merely a role as a provider of accommodation of last resort or services of last resort, but supplementary to the NDIS if there are, if the view is formed that the NDIS, admirable as it may be, nonetheless leaves gaps or deficiencies in certain kinds of services or assistance. This is something that maybe states need to think about, and I'm just wondering whether South Australia has given any thought to providing that kind of supplementary service, bearing in mind that the states have a great deal of experience in this area?
We do provide a supplementary service in terms of children that are fully within the NDIS already for exception, through an, through a part of our department called the Exceptional Needs Unit, Commissioner, and what we, what that actually does, that Exceptional Needs Unit, in it, it relates to an agreement between the Commonwealth and the states associated with children involuntary out-of-home care. The NDA and the Commonwealth had a view for some considerable time that if a child was no longer residing with their parents, that it must be a child protection issue. The complexity with that is that it does not necessarily fit child protection if a parent can no longer care for a child because a child has behaviour issues that may be a threat to the other children or the family. It's not, it would not fit the definition of child protection, but we know for many years in every state, there is a proportion of teenagers in particular who require out-of-home care. In that circumstance, the state has arranged to provide the accommodation services and the NDA, through the NDIS, provides the care services within those, those arrangements. We coordinate that arrangement through our Exceptional Needs Unit. Our Exceptional Needs Unit also exists for adults to do things like try to, to coordinate between state mainstream services and NDIS services for clients with significant complexity who might also fall into the criminal justice system or the mental health system, or in fact, the health system, for example. That's not the same, though, I suspect, Chair, of being the provider of last resort for accommodation.
I wasn't suggesting that it is, in fact, what I'm looking for is whether there is a contemplated or in existence a supplementary role beyond being a provider of services or accommodation as a last resort. And from what you're saying, it does seem that there are at least some kind of supplementary services that South Australia does provide in specific areas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you hear any part of Mr Hoffman or Mr Head's evidence over the past few days?
Yes, I heard most of both.
And do you recall me asking them some questions about what was described as a vulnerable participants' framework?
Yes.
And were you aware of the NDA and the Quality and Safeguards Commission working on a vulnerable participants' framework?
I was aware of the work that was done during COVID. I was also aware that as a result of issues raised out of both Robertson Report and the Safeguarding Task Force reports, that the Disability Reform Council Ministers, now the Disability Ministers' Meeting, has asked for specific work on that. The states were last year involved in a workshop with the NDA and the Commonwealth on that. I think it occurred in
Can you say on that, do you mean specifically the vulnerable participants' framework as Mr Head and Mr Hoffman described it?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Mr Hoffman didn't call it the vulnerable participants' framework, and I equally haven't heard that particular name, but it was about trying to, it was the safety, the name that comes to mind for me is the safety, but it's identifying at-risk participants and access for at-risk participants to the services and safeguards they may
Now, paragraph 44 of Mr Head's statement, he says he understood that the vulnerable participants' framework currently includes the following themes and definitions with data indicators for each theme, and that will come up on the screen. And I put to him yesterday that many of these themes fall outside the types of matters that would be subject to NDA plans or NDA planning. Now, looking at that list there, from housing through to health, those matters identified in A through to E are really the sort of heart of the business of states in terms of the provision of state social services, would you agree?
Yes, and I guess that whether or not they relate to someone being, services associated with an NDIS, with an NDIS participant's services will depend on the circumstances. So for example, housing, which is the first one, we know of people losing their housing because of breakdown with their service provider, that is, is as much an NDIS issue, perhaps even more so than a housing issue.
Well, on that, the Royal Commission's heard evidence from the NDIS or NDA officers to say that the NDA is not a homelessness service. Once a person becomes homeless or might be in that transient phase of not having secure housing, that's a state issue. You're aware of that?
I am aware of that, I'm also aware that it is a continuous debate. The state is responsible for housing supply and for social housing in, for all of its citizens, and people with disability are absolutely citizens of the state and need to be provided with that access as anybody else.
But if there is a debate for people with disability who, because of disability, find themselves in the NDIS scheme and they become homeless or transient, why should there be a debate about a place of last resort for refuge when one's homeless? Because you have a disability as opposed to something else?
I'm not talking about it being a debate about whether or not they're entitled to housing, most certainly not. The debate is about how those services are coordinated and wrapped around. So for example, when somebody is in hospital and needs to access another, a place to leave hospital, the complexity becomes, for example, that some people may need SDA accommodation that is separate and different to the SDA accommodation that, well, that, that is easily accessible, so a robust housing, for example. Those are issues that are affected by the SDA regulations and market arrangements with the NDIS, and also the ability to get a plan approved to move out or accommodation modifications sits with the NDIS, and there needs to be quite a careful consideration and coordination between the states and the Commonwealth. When the state controlled all of the system, it was, I guess, in the state's interest to ensure that the coordination to take somebody out of hospital was timely because it affected the hospital system.
Well, let, let me just put this to you, is what you're describing and using the word complex can really be code for, we're not quite sure how to do it, is that right?
We are currently, we, we have recently, as of the last few weeks, put, it has, sorry, let me start again. In COVID-19, the issue of people
I'm not asking about COVID-19.
No, no.
I'm just, I asked you quite a clear question. Would you accept that when you use the word complex, you're really saying, I'm using complex because we don't really know what to do or how to deal with it?
Well, the reason I was referring to COVID was we did know what to do during COVID because we did move
But I'm not asking about COVID, I'm asking about the sorts of things that might arise for Mitchell, where an anonymous letter comes in threatening his life, what are his options there? What are his options there? There's no negotiation around NDIS or anything.
I was totally referring to-
Or what happens to the Daniel Rogers, where he ends up in hospital? And the question is, is it safe to return? So I'm interested in the people-
Yes.
-with disability who require these services, and if someone is at risk of becoming homeless or their circumstances render them transient, where do they end up? Just saying to us complex doesn't help us understand that. Do you accept that?
I absolutely accept that, and I'm not trying in any way, in fact, it is something that we've had considerable concerns about the people involved. I'm very concerned about the people involved in this one, and we've been making representations on that to no end because it is wrong to have people in hospital. So I have a-
Can I please, it's one thing to say it's wrong, but it's another thing to say, who is the provider of last resort? Where is the ultimate safety net? And is that the state's responsibility?
So, council for hospital at the moment, we have, that's exactly what we are doing. We're setting up ways to get people out of hospital, and we're doing it under in-kind because that makes it easier. The complexity is that the NDIA says that you cannot go, get to access, as I understand it, and please, I'm not the NDIA, but as I understand it, you have to have somewhere to go to have any transitional accommodation within 90 days. So if you don't already have a solution, you can't get into transitional accommodation. That doesn't apply to us as a state provider, only because we are in-kind. So therefore, we have been taking people into our service to get them transition specifically because we can get around that. In the case of how to deal with that in the future, we are proposing to the NDIA that there should be a coordinated, integrated team to work that through because at the moment, two different governments and timelines are not working for people.
Coming back to paragraph 44, if you accept that the items in 44A through to E are the sorts of things that, sorts of areas where people are likely to fall between the gaps of a Commonwealth service and what the state would ordinarily provide, have you had any consultation with the NDIA or the Quality and Safeguards Commission about the development of this vulnerable participants framework with respect to the issues specifically identified in A through to E?
Yes.
You have?
Not me personally, but our officers have. The state officers met, as I said, not referred to as a vulnerable participants framework, but met with the Commonwealth in November and then met again in March, and we're waiting for the outcome of the Commonwealth was doing that work. And I understand that it's on the next Disability Ministers' Meeting adjec-
But there has been specific consultation about those factors for the vulnerability framework.
Yes, and I understand that they are being, the Commonwealth is proposing that they be part of targeted action plans under the National Disability Strategy as well.
Has there been any discussion about data sharing? Because the data that would be relevant to those areas where the state would provide services would obviously be relevant to building a data framework for identifying vulnerable participants.
Yes.
So is there a discussion or an arrangement around data sharing?
Yes, there is. And there is, South Australia's working on a data sharing arrangement with the NDIA, and that at the moment, the framework is being consulted with the NDIA legally, I believe. As well as that, we are working, we're leading, along with New South Wales, a data sharing arrangement, a project to look at how data might be collected and shared across Australia as well.
All right. Now, I want to turn to your Daniel Rogers case study. And you've heard Karen Rogers give some evidence earlier this week, is that right?
Yes.
And you've also read her statements?
Yes.
Now, Mr Rogers lived at N Street, and he moved into that accommodation in late 2004, early 2005, is that right? You're aware of that?
I don't know for certain.
Do you know, don't you, that N Street was leased by DHS from the Intellectual Disability Accommodation Association?
Yes.
And that meant that DHS provided the supported accommodation for Mr Rogers and three other people at the particular N Street residence, is that right?
Yes.
And the arrangement was described as a board and lodgings arrangement?
Yes, I believe so.
Now, in your first statement from February 2021, you've addressed some of the arrangements. So can I take you to that statement?
I'm sorry, council, I don't have either.
You don't have that one either?
Sorry.
That's coming up on the screen. Let's see how we go on this. If you need to have a look at the whole of the statement, let me know.
Thank you.
But can I draw your attention to paragraph 18? So 18 and 19?
Yes.
So in 19, there was no formal arrangement between DHS and IDAA in relation to the operation of the residents. But you say you understand DHS shared a working relationship with IDAA, which involved communication between DHS staff and IDAA in the management and coordination of certain issues such as the maintenance of the property.
Yes.
So the IDAA owns the property, DHS leases the property and provides the accommodation. Is that how it works?
Not by that stage, council, senior council, the, by that stage, each, you'll see in paragraph 18 above it, there was a process going through where there was service, sorry, accommodation providers were seeking to have individual tenancy agreements with the tenants because this was the era when there was a separation between a service provider and a landlord.
So, for example, Mr Rogers would have had an independent tenancy agreement with IDAA when he started living at the house in late 2004, early 2005?
No, I don't believe it would have happened at that stage because at that stage, the landlord and the, as I said, this was a move that happened before, I don't know exactly when it occurred for this house, but there was a decision of the department not to be the landlord for most tenants because of moving towards a choice and control scenario because it's for the landlord and the service provider to be the same, provides people extreme control over people's lives, and it was to trying to separate that out.
So what would have been the legal arrangement between Mr Rogers and the department and/or IDAA when he moved into N Street?
I think we would have been both.
Both landlord and, and was there a written tenancy arrangement with him?
I don't know, but I don't think so.
And though at some stage, there was a decision to set up an attempt at separation, and that's when the tenancy arrangements were introduced, is that right?
Yes.
And I don't think we've seen in the material a copy of any tenancy agreement between Mr Rogers and IDAA, but do you have any knowledge about what the nature of those tenancy agreements were and how they operated in practice?
We would not have that document because it's not our document to have, it's not our contract. However, I do understand that the majority of providers were providing standard residential tenancy agreements, which I would say have some drawbacks because they obviously make people responsible for property damage, et cetera, in a way that doesn't necessarily work in these arrangements.
Did you have any understanding about the, who had responsibility for maintenance of the property over the time that Mr Rogers lived there? Was that something IDAA was responsible for? Was it Mr Rogers himself under an agreement, or was it the department?
Was certainly not Mr Rogers. The, these are legacy situations where strictly, it should have been the landlord, but I think in, often in the main, DHS did do some maintenance that wasn't within the terms of their agreements. However, I know in some situations, for example, we've got properties that we believe need additional work, and we work with the landlord to try and get that done. But sometimes we would just do things ourselves because it was easier. We've recently been working through a process to try to separate that and provide very clear responsibilities with the landlords.
Are there currently written form agreements that set out the basis upon which somebody has a licence to use part of the property or is treated as a tenant for residential tenancy purposes?
Yes, senior council, I understand that the landlords seek to have tenants sign. Sometimes that is difficult to achieve because of capacity questions. And I have a view that standard residential tenancy agreement is problematic in these terms, but that's, that's not for me to say.
Would we be right in thinking that when we reflect back on the time Mr Rogers moved into N Street in the early 2000s or mid 2000s, that the expectation might have been that that's where he lived for the rest of his life?
I don't know, but I assume the expectation would be that that was his home for the foreseeable future, yes.
So it wasn't, it wasn't the case at that time that entering into state-supported accommodation would be a pathway to developing independent living skills and looking at transitioning out of arrangements such as a group home?
I think that would be fair to say, yes.
And that was the case notwithstanding that Mr Rogers and others had moved from either smaller group homes or in some cases, Strathmont Centre, to live in a more community-based living? Is that right?
Yes, that most people had, had, most of the residents, and not necessarily in this house, but most of the residents had moved out of Strathmont or another larger.
And so, and I don't mean any disrespect in saying that, but essentially, the process had been moved from a very large institution to a mid-sized institution to a small institution.
So which one are you referring to as the-
If you look at the history of disability support services in South Australia, the large institutions to the Strathmont mid-sized villa style, and the idea of leaving Strathmont into community living was really moving to smaller group homes that had all of the features of an institution, that's right, isn't it?
Yes. And I think I refer in my statement, senior council, to the fact that when people were moved to these community, new community housing arrangements, that often the, some of the culture and the operating framework of the institution went with it, and this is the legacy issues that we are trying to undo.
Right. Now, Mrs Rogers says in her statement that she understood a proportion of Mr Rogers' DSP would be used for the board and lodging component. That's right, isn't it?
Yes.
And it's the case, isn't it, that the arrangement would have been something like this, that disability SA at the time would have applied to be the payment nominee for Centrelink, so that if Mr Rogers received funds through a disability support pension, those funds would be deposited into a special account established by the department, which operated as a trust account. Is that right?
I believe so.
And those arrangements were opaque up until the department has developed a new policy, the Client Management Operation Policy. Would you agree with that?
I genuinely do not know whether they were opaque, but I-
Well, Mrs Rogers said she didn't know anything about what happened to Daniel's money, how the money was accounted for. There was no transparency from her part. Would you accept from the family's perspective, it might have seemed opaque?
Yes, I do accept.
And you touched a little bit yesterday on the financial arrangements, but I'm just wanting to focus on the arrangements in relation to accommodation services. So is it the case that the department still manages the finances for people who receive DHS accommodation services?
Not for all, only for some. Quite a number will have their own accounts, or they have an administrator of finances or some other arrangement. But some of these older arrangements, client trust funds that came out of the old IDSC, Intellectual Services Disability Council, yes, we do still continue to administer some of those. And that, as I explained yesterday, is something we are seeking to change because I don't think in the long run, it's the right solution.
And what, if any, policies or practices are you aware of to assist the residents in such accommodation to learn to be financially literate and to be able to make decisions about managing their own money?
Can I take that question on notice, please, council?
Of course. All right. Now, in 2016, IDAA considered closing N Street, and you tell the Royal Commission this is because of declining conditions and design. And you're aware, aren't you, that there was no consultation with the residents about a proposed closure at that time?
That would be a matter for IDAA.
Would you have expected that if there was going to be any consideration about the closing of N Street, and this is the place where Mr Rogers and three others had lived since 19, oh, since 2004 or early 2005, you'd expect some consultation with them?
Absolutely.
And likewise, you're aware, aren't you, that there was no consultation with the families at this time?
I, I don't, that would again be a matter for IDAA, and I think that they, I don't know that they had progressed that in any way, but yes, I would expect, and as a former tenant advocate, I would be very keen on there being such consultation and consideration of where people would find their next time.
Ms Boswell, who is IDAA?
It's a community housing provider. It's not a government organisation. And it's a-
It's now known as Your Place.
It's now known as Your Place. It's a new, it's a, it's a non-government housing provider, community housing provider.
But a non-profit organisation?
A non, yeah, a non-profit organisation.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, in September 2018, DHS had decided to withdraw its services from N Street and relocate all individuals to alternative accommodation facilities. You tell the Royal Commission that?
Yes.
And that decision was made in line with IDAA's decision to close and redevelop the residence.
Yes.
So are we to understand that by September 2018, the department and IDAA had, in effect, jointly made a decision to close this particular accommodation and to move the residents?
And to work with the residents to do that, yes. The, in this facility was like, it was built in the institutional, mini-institutional era, so it had shared bathrooms, as I understand it, and not, was less homely than, than the houses that are used for most group homes today.
And when did the consultation start with the residents? Either before or after the decision had been made in September 2018?
Can I take that on notice, please?
Was there any consultation with the residents?
I believe that there was, yes.
And what about family members, for example, Mrs Rogers?
Again, I'll take it on notice, but I believe that there was.
Okay. But, but you're not sure. And can you say anything about the nature of the consultation, or is that something you'd need to-
Can I find out in company, please?
And just to finish this bit of the topic, it is the case that, as you're aware, Daniel Rogers left the home, and the remaining individuals were all relocated by the 25th of September 2019. Is that right? That's paragraph 30 of your statement.
If it's in paragraph 30 of my statement, yes. I'm again relying on the screen and I can't see it at the moment.
Okay, we'll just bring that up.
Yes.
Now, in paragraph 31, you say, following further investigations of the staff culture at the residence issues were addressed in accordance with the department's performance management requirements, the team was subsequently dispersed to different residences under new supervision. Does that mean? And what was the further investigation? What were the issues around staff culture? And what was the outcome of that investigation?
So I think as Ms Kirkby said the other day, that after the Karen Drew, the incident and the bruising of Daniel to the attention of the department, Muriel and, and Mr Cunningham spent some time talking with and to staff, as well as that they were all put on performance improvement plans and required to undertake further training and be, and were later moved to other residences and dispersed because of a view that the culture was not sufficient, and it was better to have the staff working under supervision in a different culture.
Well, the department, can I put to you, was very well aware that there were some, quote, "culture issues" well before any investigation was done after the 25th of September 2019. That's right, isn't it?
I beg your pardon, paragraph 31 is not time-bound by paragraph 30. Further investigation of staff culture at the residence actually refers to back when the incident occurred.
All right. So what date are you referring to in paragraph 31?
I can check the performance improvement plans and let you know.
Right. But in terms of having a fair idea about what the cultural issues were in the home, you recall yesterday I took you to an internal audit interim report prepared by Mr Allwood and his team, and that was the 21st of December 2017. So I might take you back to that document, which is in hearing bundle B behind tab 32. which is in hearing bundle B behind tab 32.
Yes.
And this, remember I took you to the opportunities for improvement on page two and page three?
Yes.
All right. And you've also heard Mrs Rogers' evidence that when she came to collect Daniel Rogers from the home to go for visits on the weekend and the like, that she described Daniel's condition as being smelly, having bad breath, wearing the wrong clothes, and just his general grooming and hygiene to be poor, you heard that evidence?
Yes.
Now, she said to you that she had to pick her battles, and no doubt that would have caused you some concern, that a parent observing poor grooming, poor hygiene, would have to think about picking their battles to raise that concern?
Absolutely.
And that tells you something about the culture, doesn't it?
Yes.
That if there's a culture where families feel deterred from raising issues, that would be a matter of great concern to the department?
Yes.
But it was the case, wasn't it, at this time, there were no formal processes in place to enable the families to pick their battles or to raise concerns, isn't that right?
The, there was a complaint system within the department, I know that the audit here talks about not having clear formal processes in place, and yes, there has been a lot of work done to improve that.
All right, and so the issue of there not being clear processes in place to receive feedback or to raise issues from time to time was one of the risk areas identified by the auditors, if we look at page 11. This is identified as the Feedback and Complaints Process and its Improvement Opportunity Number Six, do you see that?
Yes.
Is that coming up on the screen? There is no formal or regular process for seeking feedback from clients and their families. Feedback is generally provided on an ad hoc basis, with no process in place to utilise this information to improve services. There is little awareness amongst staff of the DCSI feedback form, despite copies being available at the Accommodation Services Office. There is no formal, regular process for staff to provide feedback to management. Feedback from staff is provided on an ad hoc basis, the risk man system has capability for staff to enter feedback, but there is limited knowledge amongst staff at this process. And then the observations are made, is there's no formal or consistent process to notify clients and their families of the process for making a complaint, all right. So that's the finding of the auditor.
Yes.
Now, you would accept, wouldn't you, that things such as making observations about how a person presents, how they smell, their grooming, those are the sorts of things where you've got a set of eyes that might assist in identifying risks to somebody's safety and wellbeing, you'd agree with that?
I do.
And the eyes are critical for those who work in the service and for the families who, and advocates who may visit the service, you agree with that?
I completely agree.
Now, in terms of the level of risk about there being a lack of a formal or regular process, that risk level was assessed, as you'll see on the page, in terms of likelihood being possible, and consequence being minor, and the risk rating being moderate. Now, I think I asked you about another one of these risk ratings yesterday?
Yes.
And, and I questioned whether or not the risk rating in relation to risk assessments, that's the one on page 13 that we looked at yesterday, but focusing on page 11, would you agree that it would be wrong to describe the consequence of not having formal or regular processes for seeking feedback or making complaints could not possibly be described as having minor consequence?
I do completely agree, Senior Counsel, and that's why we've made very considerable changes to that process over the last year, and it's something that I was, I was very sad to hear Karen say that, and, and she knows that, and it's not the first time I have heard that either, and we have been working very hard to make that not the case. This is, it would be fair to say that this process of doing an internal audit was the first time that that had been done to look at services that have been run for many, many years, where now, as I said, in the process of external audit, this is a journey of improvement that I think is long overdue.
Well, there was a specific due diligence review done for End Street, you're aware of that, aren't you?
Yes.
We look at the document behind tab 36 in this volume?
Yes.
And that's a memo that you're not copied in on, it's from Mr Allwood to Ms Kirkby, dated the 16th of January 2019?
Yes.
But you've seen this document?
Yes, I have.
And I think we touched on it briefly in relation to the smell, but in terms of this document, and I'm just mindful, Commissioners, there's some sensitive information in this document, so this is not a document that should be displayed unless it's absolutely essential, so if Ms Boswell has a hard copy?
I have a hard copy.
And Commissioners have a hard copy, unless anyone's prejudiced by that, we'll work off the hard copy.
Senior Counsel, no one else can, then the documents are not getting put up on the screen.
I don't want it in, in the room either.
Sure.
So, so this, this document not only deals with the observations of the home, but it also gives an analysis of reported incidents that occur across a number of residents?
Yes.
Including End Street, and I'm using End Street to be the particular residence that Mr Rogers lived in?
Yes.
And for the period from October 2010 to November 2018, there were just over 900 reported risk man incidents for the three sites. Now, as it says, it might be multiple reporting of incidents, so 900 reports doesn't mean 900 separate incidents, is that right?
Yes.
But in terms of what risk man reporting told you, on the next page, page three, you're able to characterise the types of incidents, and you'll see the table there describes them?
Yes.
And if I just focus on the, on the End Street residents, so you know which one I mean?
I do.
And look at the percentage of overall incidents, for that residence, injuries which are unwitnessed and unexplained were 104.
Yes.
And if you look at the overall percentages, which I accept is taking into account the other residents, not just End Street, that constitutes just over a fifth of all of the reported incidents. Now, that tells you something, doesn't it, if there are unwitnessed and unexplained injuries occurring in those residents?
Yes.
That might tell you something about identifying risk, might tell you something about the culture, and if, as we know, there was under-reporting in relation to risk man, and I can take you to that in a moment, people were reluctant to report on risk man, that that description might even be an underestimate of injuries that were unwitnessed or unexplained, do you accept that?
Yes, I do.
All right. Now, over the page, concern was raised by the auditors in relation to medication errors?
Yes.
And looking at the graph that appears, as you'll see under the dot points, the medication errors sort of go up and down using the red line?
Mm-hmm.
But just if you have a look at the particular period of time from about the July, September 2017 period?
Yes.
You'll see that there is a very steep rise in what are recorded errors in relation to medication errors?
Yes.
And they also seem to coincide with aggression between clients and client aggression to staff, that all three of those issues all rise at the same time. That's got to be an enormous alarm bell, doesn't it?
It has, and it was, and that's, I think that in reality, it's, the, the purpose of doing this report was to identify and draw out that alarm, the, it's very unfortunate that there weren't systems in place at the time to do it appropriately without it having to be drawn to attention, those systems are now in place, and as I said yesterday, this report was finalised shortly before the incident involving Daniel, and hopefully will lead...
And you could see that, like, the timing is significant, isn't it?
Yes.
So this is, this is information that came to the department, directly to those with responsibility for accommodation services, on the 16th of January, and a month later, we're going to come to the unexplained bruising of Daniel Rogers. All right, do you know if anything was done immediately to address the concerns raised in this report? You'll see there's recommendations on page six and page seven. You may not know that, there's, there's five recommendations there, now some of them are about cleaning, but number three, for example, "Consider suitable options for reducing the risk to client, staff and public safety arising from current transportation arrangements, and five, review the risk to individual client wellbeing and safety identified in the reported incidents arising from the current mix of residents and identify appropriate long-term solutions." Do you know if anything was done in response to those recommendations?
Certainly in response, and in terms of coming up with long-term solutions, that's obviously not an immediate thing, because it does, as Senior Counsel has said, involve consultation with residents themselves. The, I believe that there was something immediately done on the transport issue, but I will need to come back to Senior Counsel on that.
We have at the document behind tab 38, a document that responds to the internal audit action, it's called an Internal Audit Action Plan, but that's July 2019.
Yes.
So that indicates that some actions were being taken by that time, but I'm interested in what was done immediately in that period from the 16th of January after that report became available.
I, I understand that, Senior Counsel, I can't give you that off the top of my head, I also do know that the person this is addressed to was not, was on leave at that stage.
Okay. Now, one of the tools that was used in the End Street residents was the risk man reporting?
Yes.
And we've just touched on that, and in terms of that, the use of risk man at that time, accepting that that's no longer the system in place?
Yes.
But going back to the document behind tab 32, so this is Mr Allwood's 21 December 2017 report, he identifies some issues around reporting of risk man, and again, can I take you this time to page 14 of that memorandum?
Sorry, 32.
Tab 32, page 14. So this is called Risk Man and Incident Reporting, and you'll see there's a description of Improvement Opportunity Number Nine?
Yes.
And I won't read that out, but you'll see that that gives a description about how staff perceived the use of risk man and the reliability of risk man, is that a fair summary?
Sorry, are we talking about Opportunity Nine?
Yes.
This, as I understand it, this is about the call centre staff not taking verbatim, rather than the inherent reliability of the system, but the call centre staff not taking actions verbatim, yes?
And the, the possible causes is that risk man reports do not follow a consistent format regarding the detail or classification required for reported incidents?
Yes.
And the potential implications are described as incorrect information provision to managers, leading to an inability to monitor incidents and potential harm to clients. And again, look at the assessment of risk level, the likelihood's possible, and again, the consequence here is minor. Do you agree that that's not, that's not a consequence that you'd agree with?
I do, however, I also agree that the, the, a moderate risk is an unacceptable risk for client, and that's what it comes out as, as moderate risk.
So...
And has to be actioned anyway.
Now, is it the case that the issues raised with the risk man reporting around this time then led to the abandonment of risk man as a reporting tool and the replacement with My Safety?
No, Senior Counsel, My Safety was, they're not strictly consequential, but they do occur one after the other. My Safety is now a different system, it has a different escalation, some of the issues identified in the audit reports, such as that staff had some reluctance to report because they were worried that all staff could see who had reported, those things have been fixed with the My Safety, in addition, it's not possible to have a, you have to rate it as a care concern, it's not possible to rate it as insignificant, for example, so yes, they have been resolved, but it's not necessarily that the My Safety was as a result of the report.
Okay. Now, you're aware, aren't you, that on the 22nd of February 2019, Ms Rogers was contacted about an injury that one of the support workers had, had witnessed in relation to Daniel's backs and bruising?
Yes.
And you're aware that, she agreed that a locum could be contacted?
Yes.
And you're aware, aren't you, that the decision was made to take Daniel to the emergency centre at the nearby hospital, you're aware of that?
Yes, I believe that was because the staff informed the locum that it had come out very quickly, and he was concerned about bleeding.
All right, and you've seen the documents and the records in terms of whether or not the staff had reported the injury to Daniel in the days before the 22nd of February, and what the nature of the risk man reporting was, you've seen all of that?
Yes, I have.
Now, in terms of Daniel's admission to the hospital, does that admission itself trigger the operation of a particular policy, for example, the Critical Client Incident Policy?
Not the admission to the hospital, but the injury does, yes.
And in what circumstances, back at that period of time, would the department have had responsibility in reporting an injury of that kind to the South Australian Police?
The department has responsibilities in duty of care to report incidents of that nature to the South Australian Police.
And you're aware, aren't you, that Mr Cunningham asked Ms Rogers to report the incident to the police?
Yes, because it was, it was the appropriate way to do it, and what had happened was we were contacted and asked, sorry, beg your pardon, let me start again, please, it was identified that that matter should be reported to the police, Wayne was asked to contact and ask Ms Rogers if she would report it to the police, because it seemed the most appropriate for the family to be reporting to the police.
Why would it be appropriate for the family to report?
Usually we would, I think that there is, and forgive me, Senior Counsel, I'm stretching my memory now, I think that there is a policy that we provide support to family and clients to go to police, if client is able to report to police that they should do so, if they're not, that we will report on their behalf, I can't tell you exactly why, it was not considered that it was the department that went to the police, other than the first-hand information in that Karen was at the hospital, had attended with the doctors, et cetera.
But, but you will have heard from Mrs Rogers, she didn't know how the injury had been caused, or when it had been caused, or whether or not the nature of the injury was one that should be reported to the police, why should the onus be on her to report to the police?
I take your point, Senior Counsel, happy for that to be reviewed, I do believe that in the, we often do report directly to police ourselves, and I, and we often accompany family to report to police as well, so I take your point, I can't account for this particular situation.
What if Daniel didn't have a Karen Rogers in his life?
We would have reported to the police, and that's part of the policy.
How could you be certain that that would have happened?
Because it, I do know that that happens, and it gets declared a critical client incident, I can't account for things back into, way into the past, but I monitor critical client incidents very carefully, and there's a very strong campaign within the department if you see something, report it, and there's also a very clear set of protocols about critical client incident reporting.
All right, well I want to ask you about that, because, but, and if you need a copy of the policy, let me know, and I'm mindful of the time, so if the Commissioners can bear with me for about three minutes, I think we can deal with this. It's a case, isn't it, that the following day after Mr Cunningham asked Ms Rogers to report the matter to the police, so this is the 27th of February 2019?
Yes.
That a decision was made to characterise the... that a decision was made to characterize the injury and the matter as a critical incident that triggered the critical client incident policy? Are you aware of that?
I believe so, yes.
And that policy, which commissioners, you have in hearing bundle D, sorry, bundle B behind tab seventy-seven, actually requires DHS to report to the police, isn't that right?
I.
Page nine, paragraph seven point three.
Yes.
If you, if you need, have a look at it.
So what bundle, what document number?
It's coming up on the screen there. Says, report to the police if the incident may constitute a criminal offence, or if police attendance is necessary to ensure the safety of those involved.
Yes.
Now, Mr Cunningham would not have encouraged Miss Rogers to report to the police if he had not formed a view that this would be a police matter, i.e. it may involve some criminal conduct.
Yes. And we, he was specifically advised to report it to the police because we were concerned it may involve some criminal conduct, that is correct.
If the matter was described and characterized as a critical incident on the twenty-seventh of February, wasn't there also an obligation for DHS to separately report to the police?
If, based on that policy, yes, I believe so. However, DHS was aware that the police were investigating and was cooperating in that.
How did you know that the day after Mrs Rogers went?
I, I'm sorry, I, I don't.
You didn't, did you?
No.
So what should have happened is, I'll just find another document, what should have happened is that if the policy was followed, then there should have been a separate report by DHS to the police.
I accept that, Senior.
Not just saying, you know, what's happening to Mrs Rogers. All right. Now, in terms of then the critical incident policy, there are requirements in terms of how a matter should be addressed, and there's specific requirements that ensure that the matter comes up to your attention, is that right, as the Chief Executive?
Yes, though I was not the Chief Executive at the time, but yes.
But, so page eleven, I think, of the policy sort of sets that out in relation to the, your, the person in your role. So paragraph seven point three point two sets out responsibilities for the Chief Executive, you're aware of that?
Yes.
And that would have been the arrangement in place when the matters were reported and characterized for Daniel Rogers as a critical incident, is that right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Then, in terms of what happens after a critical incident, is that there needs to be some form of internal investigation, is that right?
Yes.
And were you involved in the decisions as to the nature of the investigation to be conducted?
No.
Were you involved in monitoring the conduct of an investigation?
Not at the time, no.
The person in that role, if you weren't in that role with the Chief Executive at that time?
The Chief Executive is responsible, yes.
Was there an expectation that the family members would be informed about the nature of that investigation?
I believe so.
And you are aware, aren't you, that Mrs Rogers says that she was aware that an investigation was occurring, but no one made any contact with her?
That, from the Investigation Management Unit, yes, I am aware of that.
And why would it have been a case, as you say, Mrs Rogers had been at the hospital, she was the one required to report to the police, that an internal investigation didn't include her at all? How could that occur?
Senior Counselor, since this point, I have asked the Investigation Management Unit, and partly as a result of talking to Karen about the fact that she had not been contacted directly by the Investigation Management Unit, that they do inform families of what they're doing. I think that the Investigation Management Unit Director did meet with Miss Rogers earlier in the piece, but didn't come back to her to say what had happened. The policies at the time had it a responsibility of, I think, the Critical Client Incident Manager to return, to, to, to talk to the family. However, I don't think that is sufficient because the Incident Management Unit is who the family wants to hear from, and that did not occur.
And Mrs Rogers says she was the one who had to initiate a follow-up to find out what was going on, you heard that?
I did.
And that resulted in a meeting on or about the eighth of July last year that you attended?
I think that that, that actual meeting was initiated by me in relation to the trust funds, but I do know that, and, and I do know that Karen had also been asking, and I may have it wrong, yes, also been asking for a meeting to, to follow up. And so at the time, I had two issues raised with me. One was by a former executive director who said, no one's, who I met socially, who told me no one had come back to Karen. And at about approximately the same time, yes, I'm right, the, the, it was also raised with me that Karen was having, very diff, finding it very difficult to access the trust fund for Daniel, and so I arranged to meet with Karen and have both of those issues talked with her at the same time about both of those issues. The complexity with the trust fund was that the bank would not agree to.
I'll, I'll come back to the trust fund. I just think I need to take you to one document just to correct something if we've both got it wrong, is, I asked you about whether you became aware of the critical incident report. There's a document in hearing bundle B behind tab sixty-one.
Sorry, I was aware of the critical incident report. You asked me if I was involved in monitoring and I wasn't, but I was aware of the report.
All right.
And in fact, at the time, I asked for it to be treated with a higher risk.
Why did you ask for this particular matter to be treated as a higher risk?
Because I was not happy with what I read there.
Right. So that, if, you need to have a look at the email correspondence behind tab sixty-one, you're included in that correspondence on the critical incident reporting. We turn over to the next page.
Yeah, it wasn't the risk rating so much as the risk section, the risk section of the brief referred to it being a public perception issue, and I thought that was highly inappropriate because I thought it was an issue associated with client care.
And this suggests that, that the purpose of this briefing was to also brief the Minister, is that right?
That was the purpose of the briefing.
And the relevant policy in terms of dealing with client critical incidents means that it does have to make its way up to the Minister?
Yes.
So he or she needs to be aware of those matters. All right, as briefly, want to finish with the, the meeting on the eighth of July. So you say.
I think, I think, Miss Eastman, since it's nearly eleven twenty-five, perhaps we might break now.
Right, I'll, I'll ask my three questions on this topic when we resume.
All right.
So happy to adjourn, but I'll come back to this when we come back.
All right, well, we'll, we'll adjourn now until eleven forty Adelaide time.
Thank you, Chair.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Thank you. Ms Boswell, I think we're up to the eighth July meeting.
Yes.
And you've described that meeting in paragraph fifty-seven of your statement, is that right?
Yes.
And among the issues to be discussed was not just the question of Daniel Rogers' money and the trust fund, but you recall that Mrs Rogers was upset that she'd been not, she hadn't been contacted by the Director of IMU at the conclusion of the investigation?
Yes.
And you, you required Mr Dodd to apologise for this, is that right?
Yes, and I apologised as well.
What were you, you say in your statement, I apologised on behalf of DHS for the failings of the department and the handling of the incidents. What were you apologising for exactly?
Apologising for the fact that Daniel received an injury, for the failings of the department in seeing, anticipating, seeing that bruising before it became extreme, and for not coming back to Karen in a timely manner about the investigation.
Has there ever been an apology to Daniel Rogers himself?
I've not done so, no.
And in terms of making the apology, why wasn't that done earlier? And you must have been aware about the outcome of the investigation, and you must have been aware prior to the meeting that Karen hadn't been told about the outcome of the investigation, is that right?
No, Senior Counselor, I was not. I was not responsible for the Investigation Management Unit until I became the Acting Chief Executive, and the first I was aware that Karen hadn't been told about the outcome of the investigation, or about the other issue we dealt with was when I heard about it, not, not long before this meeting.
And you're aware, aren't you, that either at this meeting or some other time, Karen was told that she would not get a copy of the investigation report?
I, I heard that in Karen's evidence, yes.
And she was told she'd have to make a Freedom of Information application?
I understand that. I, I'll be honest, Senior Counselor, I thought it could, I, I don't, there was time during that meeting I wasn't in the room because I was doing other things, it may well have occurred at that point. I don't believe it occurred when I was in the room because I have, and people know, I have a view about that process that I probably would have expressed. The, I don't, I don't believe you should have to seek a Freedom of Information application. I'm told that the reason for doing so is because investigation reports often have personal information of other people in the reports, and it's a process for redacting that information under South Australia's information sharing privacy principles. However, I personally don't, I think we probably could do that without requiring an FOI application.
It's a pretty blunt instrument, isn't it, to say to somebody who wanted to know what happened to my family member who had these very large bruises on his back, to be told, yes, we've done an investigation, we can't find the cause of the injury, and if you want to know why, you have to make a Freedom of Information application?
Yes, Senior Counselor, right, it's a blunt approach, and it, and I agree with you that it needs changing.
Is that because the department wants to maintain secrecy over the investigations that they undertake?
No, Senior Counselor, as I explained, it's because private information is often in the, we do and have supported family members in the past to seek, to fill in, in fact, I've had staff, which is why I know that I would have expressed an opinion, had staff fill in and assist filling in the Freedom of Information applications to get access to reports, and I have queried that in the past. And the reason that that is done is so that it goes through this privacy issue about removing personal information from the investigation file. I don't think, I think there are other ways to, to perform that, and I will ensure that that's.
When you're talking about personal information, are you talking about personal information for the client with disability, or are you talking about protecting staff members?
Talking about personal information, there may be other clients' personal information there, there may be staff member personal information such as mental health issues, there may be all sorts of things within an investigation file or summary. I can't anticipate what they are because obviously they are all different, and it's for that purpose that policy's in place, as I, I agree with you that it, that it wouldn't feel great to be told that.
And it'd be likely if someone like Karen made an FOI application, that if there was that personal information, there might be some resistance to producing the document even following an FOI application, isn't that right?
No, it would be redacted, and the document would be provided, and it'll, and it has been in the past.
So why should somebody have to make an FOI application?
Senior Counselor, I agree.
Just, just so, just so somebody in the department can redact the information and then give a copy of the report? And that places an onus, doesn't it?
Yes.
On the person with disability and their family.
Yes, Senior Counselor.
I want to turn to the case study of Mitchell, and you have heard Victoria and James's evidence, is that right?
Some of it, yes.
Not all of it?
Not all of it, no.
Have you read their statements?
Yes.
And you're aware, aren't you, of the anonymous letter that they discovered in their letterbox on the third of March twenty eighteen?
Yes, I am aware.
And you accept, don't you, that that letter contained serious threats to Mitchell's life?
Yes, and that it's disgusting.
And that the threats were matters that should have been taken seriously?
Yes.
And the Royal Commission asked you to provide a summary of the actions taken by you or your division to the investigation, oh, sorry, no, withdraw that. We've asked you to take a summary, give a summary of actions taken by you or your division in response to the letter addressed to James and Victoria and harmed by them, sorry, received by them on the third of March twenty eighteen. That's paragraph sixty-two and sixty-three. Have you got that?
Yes.
When you prepared your statement, did you think very carefully about what you wanted to tell the Royal Commission in terms of providing a summary of actions taken by you or your division in response to the letter?
I'm not completely sure what I'm being asked, Senior Counselor.
All right, when, when you prepared, you prepared your statement, didn't you?
I had assistance to prepare my statement, yes.
But you took responsibility for the contents of the statement?
Yes.
And even if you had assistance, no doubt you would have read the statement very carefully?
Yes.
And you would have looked at the relevant documents referred to in the statement? At the time you were preparing the statement, is that right?
Yes.
And no doubt you wanted to provide the Royal Commission with a comprehensive statement to respond to the Royal Commission's requests, is that right?
Yes, although I read the question about things in, that I personally did, have I got that wrong, Senior Counselor?
It says your division as well.
And my division being the division that I was in at the time, or the division in the Chief Executive's office? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be obtuse, I read it as my, of what I personally have done, Senior Counselor.
But you didn't understand it to be your division as well?
Didn't, I didn't understand it to, my division to be the Incident Management Unit, for example, if that's what you're asking, Senior Counselor, and I apologise if I've got that wrong.
Well, you, you tell the Royal Commission in only two paragraphs, the summary of the action, and that essentially is the letter of apology on the eleventh of March this year. That's the entirety of your summary of the action taken by you in response to the letter James and Victoria received on the third of March, that's right, isn't it?
Yes, it is, and if I've misread the question, then I do apologise if I was supposed to be answering for a broader, than the, the actions taken by me personally, then I apologise.
So in terms of anything that you have done personally, it is limited to the one letter of apology on the eleventh of March this year, is that right?
And the direction to the Incident Management Unit to take, to do a further investigation, yes.
You didn't think in answering this question that you might speak to the response that you made to the Ombudsman, or any review of any documents that you made, or any briefings that you undertook? You didn't think to include those matters?
I apologise, Senior Counselor, if I've got that wrong.
You didn't think to include those matters, is that right?
I thought I was being asked about actions I had personally taken in response to the letter, not in response to the investigation by the Ombudsman. I, if I've misunderstood, I am again, sorry.
Well, the question that you identify in your statement to paragraphs for number seventeen is a summary of actions taken by you or your division to the own initiative investigation conducted by the Ombudsman. And in this question, you're asked to briefly outline any communications you had with James and Victoria regarding the investigation. And your response to that paragraph is the two paragraphs at sixty-four and sixty-five, is that right?
Yes.
And is it the case in answering this question that you interpreted that to be just a reference to you personally? Can I suggest to you that that's not the case? If one reads sixty-four and sixty-five, you're speaking about the DHS response, aren't you?
Yes, Senior Counselor, but I, you, you asked me before whether I should have put the Ombudsman's section in the section above, but given that's in the section below, that I guess that I would interpret that as duplication, so I apologise, it was disclosed to the Royal Commission.
Well, can I put it this, this to you, that in relation to the matters concerning James and Victoria, when you have been asked about your response and your division's response, the entirety is the four paragraphs that appear on page ten, is that right?
Yes.
Now, can I come back to the letter? When did you first become aware of the three March letter? And I'll give it that date because that's the date that Victoria and James received it. As you know, the letter itself is undated and unsigned.
Yes.
When did you first become aware of it?
I believe I first became aware of it in, on the, it would have been probably the twelfth of March after I returned from, to my position.
And when you became aware of the letter on the twelfth of March, so that's just over a year, oh, that's a few years before your apology, is that right?
Yes.
What did you do?
We're talking, we're, just to be clear, we're talking about the twelfth of March two thousand and eighteen.
Eighteen, yes.
Thank you.
What did you do when you first became aware of the letter?
I was advised that the, um, that the person who, in my position, had been in touch with Victoria and James and spoken to them, or maybe it was James directly and spoken to them, that a range of, um, matters, a range of security and safety measures were put in place for Mitchell, and that the investigation was being conducted by the Investigations Management Unit into the source of the letter.
You had been told about that?
Yes.
In early Ma, in, when in March, do you say you were told that?
Probably the 12th of March would be my guess, but it would some, would have been, I'm, I'm going purely based on the records, um, of, uh, an email that I have seen from Yung saying that she was going to brief me, and I returned, I believe, on the 12th of March, um, at the time the government was in caretaker.
Right. Now, when you saw the letter, uh, was it your view, and I accept it's a number of years ago, that the letter would have been the type of matter to trigger the critical client incident policy?
Yes, I considered the letter to be appalling and needed investigation and was very, very disturbing, and I remember asking what we were doing to investigate, but that's, I can't tell you more than that.
Did you give, did you give any instruction that the matter should be characterized as a critical incident, to trigger off the critical incident policy?
That would not be within my powers to instruct, Senior Counsel. It was the Chief Executive and the Incident Management Unit that had responsibility for that, that, and I understood that it had been referred to the Incident Management Unit and to the process.
Well, it wasn't referred to the Incident Management Unit for investigation until the 16th of March 2018. You're aware of that?
I'm aware of that now. As I said, I wasn't present at the time.
Do you recall whether there was any discussion about whether the letter should be characterized as a critical incident, triggering off processes under that particular policy?
Only the email that I have seen in, in doing these statements, which says that it had not been declared a critical client incident, but was being elevated, escalated in the same way. I cannot explain that. I can only say that at the time, I believe the critical client incident policy referred to specific injury, and I can only assume that it was interpreted that it was-
Not, not death threats, it didn't, didn't trigger death threats?
It does, it certainly does now, Senior Counsel. In fact, uh, as of, uh, June 20, it could be last year, I believe, when I was acting chief, when I, once whilst I was acting Chief Executive, the Critical Client Incident Policy, um, in conversation with the Minister, was specifically changed to ensure that anything that was, um, should be reported to the police was also declared a critical client incident. That partly occurred because I became aware of two things that had been reported to police that had not been declared critical client incidents and reported that to them.
Do you accept reflecting on the whole of the incident, and I'll go through a few parts in a moment, that if the letter had been characterized as a critical client incident and the policy process triggered, that matter would have come to the attention of the Minister and the most senior people in the department immediately?
The, from the document I've seen, that's, um, the email that I've seen, it appears to not, to notify the Chief Ex, uh, the Chief of Staff of the Minister on that notification. The notification list seems to be the same one for a critical client incident, uh, and why it was not classified a critical client incident, I, I can't tell you, but it did notify the Minister's Chief of Staff at the time, as per the Critical Client Incident Policy. The government, however, was in caretaker, um, and the government changed, uh, sometime later, and to the best of my knowledge, the next Minister was not informed.
Uh, you're aware, aren't you, that while the letter was referred to IMU for investigation on or about the 16th of March 2018, the actual investigation didn't start until the 20th of April? You're aware of that?
I'm only aware of that from reviewing these documents.
And you're aware that in terms of the IMU undertaking an investigation, it was done pursuant to the Managing Misconduct Guidelines? Are you aware of that?
Yes, well, I, I accept that.
And the Managing Misconduct Guidelines, you provided a copy to the Royal Commission, and I don't need to take you to it, but let me know if you need it, which is behind tab 78, us, a set of guidelines for managing misconduct by staff, is that right?
Yes, based on the title.
Right. So if the Managing Misconduct Guidelines were applied, would you agree with me that someone has had to make an assessment that the author of the letter, or the circumstances of the letter reaching Victoria and James, was done by a staff member?
Or may have been, yes.
And, um, and that, so somebody has made a decision that the letter must in some way be connected to a staff member? That would have had to have been done to trigger the operation of these guidelines informing the investigation?
Senior Counsel, I think it would need to be done, that assume that it was a possibility, not that it must have been.
If it, if it was managed under the Managing Misconduct Guidelines, would you agree with me that it was really then characterized as a staffing matter, rather than a matter which identified a particular threat or risk to the safety of Mitchell?
Uh, no, because I believe that it was identified as a threat or to the safety of Mitchell, because there was quite a lot of work put into, as I was advised, which was the thing I was concerned about at the time, which was what, there was hourly checks, there were, there were various things put in place to ensure the safety of Mitchell. Um, so I think that, that, that course of action operated separate, as I would understand it, to this characterization, that it may have, could possibly have been a staff member, may well have been a staff member, therefore misconduct guidelines should be applied.
If, uh, the misconduct guidelines were applied, and the focus of the investigation was on the staff, would that have changed the extent to which the IMU should have informed Victoria and James about the progress of the investigation?
Could, could you ask that again, please, Senior-
If the investigation was conducted pursuant to the Managing Misconduct Guidelines, so therefore had a focus on staff matters, did that have a bearing on the extent to which Victoria and James were informed about the progress of the investigation?
I do not know the answer to that question. I'm sorry, I do not know whether, compared to what, I guess would be my question.
Right. You're aware, aren't you, that the principal community visitor had a meeting with the then Director of the IMU on or about the 4th of October 2018, and the principal community visitor was told that there was no standalone investigation in relation to the letter, and that the IMU's investigation was linked to James's complaint about support workers defaming Victoria? Are you aware of that?
Yes, and I'm also aware of that from the Ombudsman's report, as well as from, uh, the, the statement made by the Director, at the then Director of IMU, to the, uh, Ombudsman.
And you're aware, aren't you, that the principal community visitor prepared, uh, an annual report, which was tabled in the Parliament?
Yes.
And this matter was one of the matters included in his report?
Yes.
And does the tabling of a report of this kind trigger any process within the department to say, hang on here, look what the community visitor has found, should we review what's going on, undertake some sort of audit, or do something in relation to that? What happens?
As I understood it at the time, and I can't speak for others involved, there's, that my understanding at the time was that it was under investigation. I was not privy to those conversations. I did believe that the letter was under investigation at the time.
But I'm asking about what happens when, uh, the community visitor, uh, the community visitor writes in his annual report, these are problems that, that have been encountered, this is what I'm hearing. Does the fact that the community visitor reports on these matters, those reports are tabled in Parliament, trigger anything within the department to do anything?
Yes, but I would have, have thought that we would have known about the issues before they are in the annual report. So the community visitor also advises us of issues that we need to deal with prior to them appearing in an annual report. And so when I say I can't answer that, it's because I understood that at the time there was an investigation going on, and so there was nothing to trigger, because I understood that process was in place. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Well, what, what does the department do with respect to the principal community visitor's annual reports? I assume that the, uh, principal community visitor has made a number of reports over the years, and those reports are tabled in the Parliament. What happens when matters are drawn to the department's attention through those reports?
Issues that we've not formally been aware of, and I can't specifically think of any, I mean, there would, certainly the, the department reads the reports, takes the reports seriously, um, but usually we would have known about it before it appears in an annual report.
Right. Now, you're aware, aren't you, that on the 28th of November 2018, DHS concluded its investigation and an investigation report was prepared?
I am now, I wasn't at the time.
And you're aware, aren't you, that there, uh, was some correspondence involving the Minister with James? Are you aware of that? Perhaps if I take you to Hearing Bundle A behind tab 49?
I don't have Hearing Bundle A, I'm sorry.
We'll bring it up on the screen. Have you seen this letter before?
Yes, I've seen it in these documents.
All right. Were you involved in giving any advice to the Minister about the preparation of this letter, or any briefing around, uh, the James and Victoria concerns?
There was a briefing, yes.
Were you involved in that?
Uh, I can't tell you. I suspect not, but I would need to check.
What would be the nature of the briefing to the Minister about a matter of this kind, and more specifically this, this matter? Do you have any recollection?
No, I, I do not, I'm very sorry. Well, what would be the na, sorry, which question you asked me? Do I have a recollection, or what would be the nature?
Yes.
Um, in terms of, uh, no, because I have no recollection, because I was not, uh, well, I don't recall being involved in this. Um, what would be the nature of the briefing? The briefing would, uh, explain to the Minister what had occurred, I assume, and it, and draft a letter.
Well, this letter from the Minister to James says in the second paragraph, whilst the Investigation Management Unit in DHS and the South Australian Police conducted thorough investigations into the incident, they were unable to determine the source of the anonymous letter. You see that?
Yes.
It accepts that somebody would have had to have briefed the Minister and/or prepared this draft letter before the Minister signed off on the letter, is that right?
Yes, I do.
And you would have expected that if the Minister was going to write to a constituent, in this case James, that the Minister would want to ensure that the contents of her letter were correct?
Yes.
And the only source of information for the Minister to send this letter would have been the briefing from the department, is that right?
Yes, I believe so.
Can you explain on what basis the Minister was briefed that the IMU and the South Australian Police had conducted, quote, "thorough investigations into the incident"? How could that come about?
No, I could not, and I, I would agree, agree that they were not thorough investigations, Senior Counsel.
Has anyone in the department taken steps to brief the Minister that her letter on the 10th of January 2020 may have contained some incorrect information?
I've been speaking to the Minister about this matter after seeing the, uh, after the evidence reduced the other day by Council Bennett.
But you were well aware that neither the IMU or the South Australian Police had conducted thorough investigations well before hearing the evidence in this case study, isn't that right?
I had not seen this letter previous to the hearing bundles, to my recollection.
Now, um, you're aware, aren't you, that the South Australian Ombudsman commenced an own initiative investigation?
Yes, I am.
And the Ombudsman provided a provisional report to the department and also to James and Victoria on or around the 25th of October 2020, is that right? And it was your responsibility to respond to the Ombudsman's provisional report, is that right?
Yes.
And you did write to the Ombudsman, uh, making some observations about the provisional findings and recommendations, is that right?
Yes.
So if I can ask you now to turn to the final Ombudsman's report, Commissioners, you'll find this in Hearing Bundle D behind tab seven. Ms Boswell, have you got a copy of that?
No, sorry.
And if not, we'll, we'll bring, I think you need to have a hard copy of the whole of the document.
Thank you.
We'll put it up on the screen, but it might be easier, because I need to jump around the document a little bit. All right, we'll just give you a copy.
Thank you.
All right, so you've got the front page there. Is this a, a document that you've seen before and you're familiar with?
Yes.
All right. Now, um, in terms of, uh, your role, if you turn to page three of the document, the Ombudsman says, and this is the final report, under the heading Procedural Fairness, that on 25 September 2020, he provided his provisional report to the department and to Victoria and James, and he notes there that Victoria and James made lengthy submissions. And then he says this, "In response to my provisional report, the Chief Executive of the department," and there's a reference to you, "offered no comment in response to my conclusions on issue one. Ms Boswell also accepted the first, fourth, and sixth recommendations foreshadowed in my provisional determination without detailed comment. In response to my provisional view on issue two," and we'll come to that in a moment, "you responded in writing," is that right?
Yes.
And in terms of your response, the Ombudsman's reproduced what appears to be part of your response on that page, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And that was in relation to some staffing issues at Mitchell's residence?
Yes.
Okay. If you can turn over the page. The Ombudsman says in the second paragraph there, finally, on issue four and recommendation six, which concerned the department's response to a letter that threatened harm against Mitchell, Ms Boswell explained, and you'll see that then there is a large, uh, part of this page that reproduces your letter, is that right?
Yes.
Now, uh, when you prepared this letter, you, you had been fully briefed on all matters, is that right?
Well, I believe I had been briefed. Um, I've, fully briefed on all matters would probably be more than I would accept at this point.
Did you take any, um, role personally to ask for all details concerning the investigation?
No, I did not.
And did you, did you yourself, before responding to the Ombudsman, uh, have an opportunity to look at any of the documents relevant to the investigation?
No, I was, I consulted with the Directors of the Incident Management Unit, both the former and the current, as it says there, both of whom, uh, as it also says, were experienced former police officers, and they advised me that they believed that the investigation had been appropriate.
Right. So it was on the basis of what you were told, that you, uh, informed the Ombudsman that you considered that the Director Accommodation Services and Director Incident Management Unit did properly investigate the letter. That's how you formed that opinion, is that right?
No, not the Director Accommodations-
Well, I'm reading the first sentence. Says, "Ms Boswell explained, colon, 'I consider that the Director Accommodation Services and Director Incident Management Unit, IMU, did properly investigate the letter.'" That's what you've told the Ombudsman-
Yes, I thought, I was looking at paragraph further down, I apologize.
You were not seeking to mislead the Ombudsman, were you?
No, of course not, Senior Counsel. I beg your pardon. I was looking at the paragraph further down about consulting both the former and the current.
All right, well, we'll work through this. So when you express your opinion that you considered that there had been a proper investigation of the letter, that was based on what people had told you, is that right?
It was based on briefings from two government executives, yes.
Right. And on that basis, you made the request that the provisional report be changed to state this. "The investigation commenced in March 2018 when the Director Accommodation Services contacted the Director Incident Management Unit. Following this contact, strategies were put in place to ensure the safety of Mitchell, and inquiries were commenced to identify the author of the letter. It was at this point that I consider the commencement of the investigation." It was at this point that I consider the commencement of the investigation."
Yes.
Do you're aware, aren't you, that the investigation did not commence until April?
The pre, the former executive, sorry, the former director of the Investigations Management Unit has provided a statement that is not here, but to the Ombudsman that I have read, that says that he considers that the actions that he advised the Director of Accommodation Services to undertake in talking to staff and asking them for leads was, in his view, the start of the investigation, and that's what that's based on.
So again, based on something that somebody told you.
Well, it's based on a signed statement by the Director of the Investigations Unit, yes.
Now, obviously, there's a little more in the letter, and the Ombudsman's put the dot-dot-dots in there, but the next paragraph, which you might have been reading earlier, is you tell the Ombudsman you consulted with both the current and former directors of the Incident Management Unit, and they are both of the view, "There is nothing more that could be done at the time or now". So again, that's, you're just repeating there what you were told, is that right?
Yes, on the basis of expert advice from two senior investigators, yes.
But that, had you personally formed a view at that stage whether nothing more could have been done at the time or now?
I formed the, I sought advice from two people with significant more expertise than me, and that was what I was advised. It's not my current view, but yes, at the time, that's what I was advised, and I do not claim to have qualifications in investigation, and both of these people have significant qualifications.
Well, that's a point you sought to make to the Ombudsman, isn't it? Is to say to him, "It is important to note that the current and former directors have significant long-term experience in both detective and prosecution fields with the South Australian Police collectively over multiple decades".
Which was the basis of why I believed their advice, yes.
Both of those directors, at relevant times, were employees of the department, were they not?
At the relevant times, yes.
And in terms of line management reporting, that you were a manager, a very senior manager, to whom each of them would report, is that right?
Not before I was, they always reported to the Chief Executive, so when I was not the Chief Executive, they did not report to me, no.
All right. Now, you tell the Ombudsman, "As part of the investigation, the department ensured that all staff at the residence were spoken to about the letter, and in particular, those with direct connection with Mitchell, telling staff about the letter and asking what they knew about who sent the letter and encouraging them to come forward with information". Where did you get that information from?
From a statement written by the investigator, by the, a signed statement written by the Director of the Investigations Unit, who believes that he instructed, and that Claude Bruno, who was the Director at the time, undertook that.
So the person who had responsibility for the investigation told you that he had instructed somebody else to do this, and therefore that allowed you to reach the conclusion that it in fact had been done, is that right?
Yes.
And you yourself took no steps to verify the accuracy of what you told the Ombudsman here, other than you relied on what you had been told, is that right?
Other than a statement, a written witness statement, yes.
You tell the Ombudsman the IMU investigator was satisfied there was nothing more that could be done. You accepted that advice at the time, did you?
I did at the time, yes.
And then you say, "It is now over two years since the original letter was sent, and the ability to undertake any further meaningful inquiry is unrealistic". That's your opinion, isn't it?
That was the opinion of the people with the advice I was given, who are the professionals, yes, it was.
That was your opinion, wasn't it? You wouldn't say that to the Ombudsman if it wasn't your opinion?
It was my opinion based on advice, yes. It's no longer my opinion.
And you tell the Ombudsman, "There have been significant staff changes within the Accommodation Services, and in the department's opinion, further inquiries would not identify the author, which would be the only real basis for conducting further inquiries". So that's reflecting the whole of the department's opinion, is that right? You wouldn't say it if it didn't, if you didn't mean it, would you?
Speaking on behalf of the department, I don't, the whole of the department is thousands of people, I assume it can't be the whole, every one of those thousands of people, no.
But what does then the department's opinion, what's that a reference to?
Speaking as an officer on the path of the agency.
So that was your opinion, that further inquiries would not identify the author?
Yes, on advice.
Right. And then you say, "If in your opinion", that's a reference to the Ombudsman, "you believe there to be any other investigative methods that could be employed outside of what the department has undertaken to date, I would welcome a conversation with you".
Yes.
Would it be fair to say that within the department, no one had turned their mind to other investigative methods that could be employed outside the department?
I can't speak on behalf of everybody's minds, whether anybody else had turned their minds, but I had asked the Ombudsman if they had another option, whether they could speak to me about it.
Well, one option would have been pretty plain, wouldn't it? At the time, you were writing to the Ombudsman, and that is, perhaps we move from having internal investigators to somebody completely external, somebody whose arms-length from the department, somebody with forensic experience. That would have been a pretty easy conclusion to reach.
These, the staff within that area do have forensic experience, but yes, we, I intend to take further investigations. I've spoken to the Commission for Public Sector Employment, and we will ask for an external investigator to come and look further back in time.
That's now, today?
Yes.
But that's not a view that you held when you communicated to the Ombudsman, asking the Ombudsman to change the findings and alter the recommendations, is that right?
Yes, that's right, based on advice.
Now, you'll see that the Ombudsman did take into account the matters that you raised with him, and he was prepared to make some revisions to recommendation six, sorry, three and six, but he says this, "I have not been persuaded by the department's argument that its investigation of the letter in 2018 was sufficient. I do not agree, at that time, nothing more could have been done to identify the author of the letter. I remain of the view that there were other investigative steps that could have been taken by the department, including those detailed below", and he refers to paragraph 151, and if we look at that now, that's at page 29. This is where the Ombudsman says, "Given that serious threats against a client's safety appear to have been made by a person employed by the department in the care of vulnerable people, I consider that the department should have taken all reasonable steps to establish who sent the letter. In particular, the department could have", and then there's three dot points in terms of an approach that could have been taken. Do you see those?
Yes.
And can I suggest to you, with respect to those three dot points, they would have been all matters that would have been easily and open to the department, as you say, with directors with significant long-term experience in both detective and prosecution fields with the South Australian Police collectively over many decades, one would have assumed that people with that skill and responsibility could have turned their minds to these three dot points, do you agree?
Yes, and they may have, I cannot tell you whether they did. Turn their minds is not the same as reaching the conclusion that that would be the thing that they choose to do, but I would accept that they should turn their minds to those questions.
All right. So going back to the Ombudsman's report at page five, he says that "Your submissions as to the efficacy of further meaningful investigation at this stage have caused me to reconsider my recommendation. Staffing changes within Accommodation Services at the department are particularly persuasive in this regard", but then he says this, "That said, I am still very concerned that the author appears to have been a department employee, and they may still be engaged in the care of vulnerable people such as Mitchell. I therefore do not consider it appropriate to remove my foreshadowed recommendation entirely. I have amended it as provided at the end of the report", and then he acknowledges that it would be difficult, but he says, "Given the letter's very serious nature, I consider there are necessary and an appropriate use of the department's resources in light of its responsibility for the safety and the well-being of vulnerable people in its care". So you've seen that?
Yes.
All right. Now then, in terms of the Ombudsman's consideration of this matter, no doubt you have read the Ombudsman's report in some detail, is that right?
Yes.
And the Ombudsman deals with a number of issues in this report, including setting out a very detailed chronology about the way in which the matters came to the department's attention and the steps taken by the department to investigate internally. Can I summarise those parts of his report in that way?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's all right.
Could you, I didn't understand that, I beg your pardon.
All right. I'm trying to do a shortcut.
Sorry.
So, step one, the Ombudsman's report is fairly extensive and it covers a lot of topics, do you agree with that?
Yes.
To the extent that the topic about the investigation of the anonymous letter is dealt with in this Ombudsman's report, that part of the report dealing with the anonymous letter sets out in some detail how the letter came to the department's attention and the steps taken by the department.
Sorry, I understand, yes.
So rather than walk you through all of that in detail, I just wanted to take you to some of the observations made by the Ombudsman. Now, at page 28 of his report,
Yes.
He says at paragraph 140 that he did not accept the department's investigative options were limited to the initial inquiry, and he says, "It appears that the author of the letter could reasonably have been narrowed to all staff at the residence and perhaps then further to those who were aware of the site manager who was preparing to leave".
Yes.
You would accept the Ombudsman's view now, is that right?
Yes.
And then at paragraph 144, he says, "Given the seriousness of the letter, I consider that specialist investigative skills were necessary, and I'm not satisfied that preliminary local inquiries and the subsequent contact with nine people were sufficient".
Yes, and I assume he's referring to the actions of the Director of Accommodation Services in speaking to all the staff at the residence.
Right. And would you accept that he expresses a view that because of the seriousness of the letter, there needed to be specialist investigative skills?
Yes.
But at the time, you responded to the Ombudsman on the provisional report, you were of the view that the past and present Director of the IMU had the relevant specialist investigative skills within either him or within the team, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, at paragraph 153, he says in his view, "It was essential to ensure that the author of the letter was identified. It concerns me greatly that they may still be employed by the department and working with vulnerable people".
Yes.
That remains the case today, does it not?
Yes.
And he makes the finding that the department failed to properly investigate the letter, and this was unreasonable within the meaning of section 25.1b of the Ombudsman's Act. So you now accept that finding?
I accepted that finding at the time.
The Ombudsman then made a series of recommendations which appear on page 30.
Yes.
And if I can turn immediately to recommendation six, because this is the one dealing with the investigation, that recommendation was that the department conduct further inquiries to identify the author of the letter, including but not limited to, and you'll see the dot points there, interviewing the author of the petition, if possible, and interviewing any other employees who worked at the residence when the letter was received, who were aware of the petition?
Yes.
And continue to an investigation where those inquiries indicate that the author of the letter might be identified, right? And he makes the recommendation, "If the department's unable to identify the author, no further inquiries are made", then the recommendation is that the department advised Victoria and James the steps it's taken and the outcome. But if the person can be identified, then a recommendation is made with respect to disciplinary action. Okay. You're aware, aren't you, that the department acted on this recommendation?
Yes.
And that recommendation, that recommendation resulted in a fresh investigation, is that right?
As I understand it, yes.
And that investigation commenced before the Ombudsman provided the final report, is that right?
Because when I saw the Ombudsman's provisional report, I directed that that occur.
And you, did you have any hand in how the investigation should be conducted?
No.
Did you instruct those responsible for conducting the investigation to perhaps consider some of the observations made by the Ombudsman about the need for specialist investigative skills or the nature and scope of the investigation?
The instruction I gave was that the, that the investigation should occur as per the Ombudsman's report, right? I didn't specify line by line, no.
Did you receive a copy of the investigation report after it had been completed?
No, I was not aware that it had been completed until I asked, and after I found out, I immediately wrote to Victoria and James because I did not know that it had been completed.
No one told you?
No.
You're aware, aren't you, on the 1st of March, that Mr Dodd wrote to Victoria and James by way of email and informed them that the department had been unable to identify the author and no further inquiries would be made, and the investigation was at an end?
I was not aware of that until after the fact, but yes.
Have you now seen that investigation report?
I have now, yes.
And you're aware, aren't you, that Mr Allwood gave some evidence earlier this week in relation to an audit that was completed on the 2nd of June this year in relation to whether the investigation done following the Ombudsman's recommendation was a process that had the integrity and met the auditing standards, is that right?
Yes, I am.
And did you have any role in instructing him to undertake that audit?
Yes, because I was not aware of the investigation when it was completed, and I was concerned about the letter, the tone of the letter, the letter not appearing to be empathetic written to Victoria and James, and also whether or not the second investigation had been sufficient. I asked for my internal audit to have a look at it.
All right. And you saw his memorandum of the 2nd of June 2021?
Yes.
And are you aware of the evidence that he gave earlier this week?
Yes.
Would you accept that, looking at all of the steps taken by the department, that there has frankly been a woeful failure in relation to the investigation of the anonymous letter?
I accept that the, there could be further steps taking the investigation, and I'm seeking to do so, yes.
It's a woeful failure, isn't it?
I have, I have, I don't think it's sufficient. I do, I want to FOI as well the police investigation, which I don't know whether the Royal Commission has had the chance to see, so I need to understand the police investigation. I accept that it is not sufficient. I have a number of, to accept that it would be a woeful failure would be to accept that I have, that I have two investigators who's saying that it was appropriate and adequate, but I now am not of that view, and I also want to see what the police did as well.
So what happens now for Victoria and James?
I will keep them up to date and apologize to them and seek to have that investigation undertaken.
I suppose that they would say to you, "Thanks for the apology", but if, as the Ombudsman said, the person who's the author of the letter is within the department and may still work with Mitchell or people like Mitchell who are in the care and require accommodation from the department, there continues to be a significant risk, do you accept that?
I do accept that. I also have to accept that I have investigators and I understand the police saying that it is very difficult to find that. They may not be staff of the department, but I do accept that that's a significant issue. There has been a lot of work put to ensure that the staff around Mitchell are unlikely to be that, or very unlikely, because...
How do, how do you know that?
Because the staff at the time, it was reduced to core staff, it was discussed, as I understand it, and I'm not party to it, with James and Victoria, that that was the staff that they were comfortable with, and that the staff that now work there are a different cohort of staff than any involved at the time, as I understand it.
You're aware, aren't you, that James and Victoria have expressed some frustration about the fact that the Ombudsman's process was confidential and that there's been confidentiality around the documents prepared by the department or used as part of the investigation leading to the report, you're aware of that?
Yes.
Is there any particular reason why these matters had to be confidential with respect to Victoria and James?
I think you might need to ask the Ombudsman, I'm sorry, I don't know. It may have something to do with the... It may have something to do with the operation of the legislation, I don't know.
But it would have been open for you or someone in the department to organise a meeting with Victoria and James if they wished to talk to them about the Ombudsman's report?
Yes.
And that never occurred?
No, as I said, I did not know that the second report had been finished until after it was gone.
And one of the recommendations, number one, was the department provide a formal apology to Victoria and James in regard to the errors identified in the Ombudsman's investigation?
Yes.
And you wrote a letter of an apology, is that right?
Yes.
And you became aware on reading Victoria and James's statements for the Royal Commission that they had not received your letter?
Yes, and I felt terrible about that, I actually felt quite sick about it.
And they have, I think, said that they're now aware of the letter and they've now seen your letter?
Yes.
In terms of what you're apologising for, were you just sending the apology because that's what the Ombudsman recommended that you do?
No, as I said, I was most concerned that the second investigation, a letter had been sent to Victoria and James that I did not feel adequately expressed what should be expressed to Victoria and James and, no, I was sending a letter because I genuinely also believe that that apology is warranted.
And what about an apology to Mitchell himself?
I would be happy to provide an apology.
It's never occurred?
I have not done that, I apologise.
Do you accept?
I also, Senior Counselor, understand, and I could be wrong in this, but I had understood that Mitchell was not aware of the letter in his own interest and so therefore it would be difficult to apologise for a letter that he was being protected from, but I could be wrong on that.
But he was aware that he'd been referred to as Piglet. You've seen that in the evidence, haven't you?
Yes, I have.
And you've heard Victoria describe that as a derogatory term?
Yes, I have.
And I asked you yesterday about the importance of language and one of the auditors' report describing people as childlike. Do you accept that if clients in DHS were referred to by names such as Piglet, that that is unacceptable?
I do. I also understand, Senior Counselor, that it was, and I've been told this now repeatedly, an old term that existed many years ago that was in use at that particular point in time and that nobody had heard it in recent times until that day.
Do you accept reflecting on the matters now and the period of time that's elapsed, that it's not surprising that James and Victoria have lost complete trust and confidence in the department?
I accept that, yes.
And whose responsibility is it to restore trust and confidence?
I believe that's mine.
And how can that be done?
I have, I was waiting for the end of this hearing to be able to make contact because I thought it was inappropriate to make contact during this hearing. As it said, I sent the letter and then discovered that they had not received it and that letter offered a contact. But after the end of this hearing would be my intention to make contact. Subject to legal advice, Senior Counselor, because I'm trying to be respectful to the Royal Commission's processes to undertake a number of things. One is to speak to them and apologise and inform them of the next steps. Secondly, to offer that if it would be of use to them and not in any way to suggest that we want to do this, but if it would assist them in any way to allow an alternative service provider to use that house, even though it's a collective site, if that would make them feel more comfortable because they're providing services from somewhere else and to do other things necessary to restore trust and confidence.
You accept one thing, it's important for government agencies, is to have both transparency and processes that allow for accountability?
Yes, I do.
And would you accept that one step that could be taken to restore a loss of trust and confidence was for there to be, in this case, an independent investigation conducted arms-length from the department by a person with relevant qualifications and forensic skills?
I accept that, Senior Counselor, but I also would put forward that the Investigation Management Unit sits separate in the department and conducts investigations on referral of groups such as ICAC, for example, under, and refer, so, so, and in line with how I understand the NDIS Commission works at times, a report is made to ICAC, it is then referred to the department, depending on what the Commission itself determines, and then the report is seen afterwards by the relevant group. I accept that the process may be seen to be better from Victoria and James, given the circumstances for that to be independent. I don't accept that that's necessary in all circumstances. In this one, though, I do accept that, yes.
Do you accept one way of developing trust and confidence is to include and consult with James and Victoria on the sorts of things the Ombudsman has recommended need to be undertaken? And that is reviewing and amending policies around supervision, to amend policies requiring regular audits of incident reporting, to amend standard agenda for support worker meetings to include incident reporting, and for the department to review and amend managing misconduct guidelines and any other guidelines or internal documents to provide greater clarity on a range of issues. Those are all, those are all matters that, can I put to you, the department would be assisted by understanding Victoria and James's view? Would you agree with that?
If I may take them individually, Senior Counselor, amending relevant policies to require regular audits is a very factual thing. So I do think that there is point about the misconduct guidelines and other guidelines, but the facts, there are some in there which are things that should just be done and I believe have now been done.
Have all of those recommendations been acted on by the department?
I believe so.
Has the department undertaken any training or developed guidelines on a trauma-informed approach to the way in which investigations that involve a threat to a person's safety or wellbeing are undertaken?
There's, the department's been working on trauma-informed approaches across the agency. I do not believe at this point that has occurred in terms of investigations, but I will undertake to do so.
Do you accept that when people may experience trauma or great distress, that it is important that an investigator undertake an investigation informed by trauma-informed approaches?
Yes, and our investigations unit actually all has vulnerable witness training and they all have training associated with appropriate investigations for vulnerable people, yes.
And would you, reflecting back on these events, and I think as the Ombudsman said, sometimes the benefit of hindsight can be helpful, is that there's nothing about the way in which the department approached the conduct of the investigation or the communication with Victoria and James that had any element of a trauma-informed approach? You'd agree with that?
Yes, I do.
All right. I'm going to put to you again, would you agree with me that reflecting on the process of the investigation, it has been a woeful failure by the department?
I accept it has been a failure. I think that it, there are, as you say, the benefit of hindsight, Senior Counselor, I absolutely accept that failure. I also accept that there was different views about, and I think that these are informed by not a trauma-informed approach, but more a forensic investigation approach about how far one can go with success. I don't necessarily accept that that is what we should be doing and it won't be what we'll be doing into the future.
Now, Commissioners, I'm mindful of the time. The final topic that I need to deal with is the...
You do keep saying that.
I am, well, I'm trying my hardest to go through.
I know, I know.
But I don't want to...
If you don't mind, I just want to ask a...
So can I just, before you do, Chair, can I just say, I have finished that part of the case studies for Mitchell and Daniel Rogers. And the final topic that I need to, I want to turn to is the department's response to the safeguarding report and the Robertson report. So I was going to suggest if it's convenient to perhaps deal with any questions the Commissioners have about these matters now before we move to the next topic.
Yes, well, that's why I wanted to ask the question now as I thought you had finished this particular inquiry. Ms Boswell, you were asked a number of very detailed questions about your response to the Ombudsman that appears at page four of the Ombudsman's report. And one of the points that you made that reflects the contents of your response was that you received advice from very experienced investigators at IMU and in the other department that was concerned, the Accommodation Services. Didn't the IMU have an interest in this? They were the ones that conducted the inquiry, weren't they?
I'm sorry, Chair, I didn't understand the question, that they...
The question is whether the person who was giving you advice as to the thoroughness of the inquiry in effect had a conflict of interest because that was the organisation that conducted what has now been found to be an inadequate inquiry?
If, I guess that I have to take advice from experts within the department, yes, they had an interest in the advice that they gave me, but yes, I took the advice on face value and the advice was given with explanation about what they believed appropriate investigative techniques would be and what they believed was the efficacy of further investigation and why.
I'm not queering that you received that advice. My point is that the very worst person to ask for advice about the thoroughness of an inquiry is the person responsible for the conduct of the inquiry, isn't it?
Except I also asked for advice from the now director who was not responsible for the conduct of the inquiry at the time. So the person, the people that gave me advice was both the person who had been responsible and for the person who was now responsible, who was not the same person and not, and in a completely new person in the same position.
Yes, but that doesn't remove the problem, does it?
Depends on whether you believe that it was a personal conflict because the investigation was conducted by an individual, by a person in charge. New person in charge is giving advice about what they saw as the past record. So it's, there is less conflict.
But there is still conflict, isn't there?
There may still be conflict, but I would accept that there is less conflict.
Hmm, all right, thank you. I'll ask Commissioner Bennet if she has any questions to put to you on this aspect of the examination.
And no questions, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner McKeown.
Aye, no, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms Eastman?
Thank you. I want to turn to the two reports that followed investigations and inquiries on the passing of Anne Marie Smith last year. Now, there are two reports. You're aware of the Robertson review?
Yes.
And did you hear Mr Head's evidence yesterday?
Most of it, yes.
And you're aware, aren't you, that he commissioned Mr Robertson to conduct a review?
Yes, and I was aware at the time.
And the terms of reference were essentially directed to the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission, but it also picked up other agencies, including the NDI. You're aware of that? Now, it's the case, isn't it, that you received a copy of the Robertson report?
Yes.
You've dealt with this at paragraph one hundred and sixty-three and one hundred and sixty-four. So this is page twenty-three of your second statement. Now, the Royal Commission asked you to provide a brief update on any responses to or actions taken by the South Australian Government and/or Department specifically to address the findings and/or recommendations made in the Robertson reviews. You see, you were asked that question?
Yes.
And the entirety of your response to that is the matter set out in paragraphs one hundred and sixty-three and one hundred and sixty-four, is that right?
Yes, the majority of the Robertson review is very similar to the Safeguarding Task Force review and the state's concentration was responding to the Safeguarding Task Force review. And much of the matters that are in the Robertson review were picked up by actions taken by the state in response to the Safeguarding Task Force review, which, they do come from quite similar actions in them.
So we write in understanding that in terms of the department and the South Australian Government, that its focus has been on the Safeguarding Task Force report rather than the Robertson recommendations?
The Robertson recommendations were not recommendations to South Australia, they were recommendations to the Commission. Certainly, South Australia's been interested in those and progressing those through the Disability Ministers' Meeting or Disability Reform Council meeting and that they, the work being undertaken is seeking to pick up both reviews.
Right. And I think you've made a reference to some correspondence with the Commission, all right. So in terms of the South Australian task forcing, task, safeguarding task force, you are a member of the task force, is that right?
Yes.
And the Commissioners have got in the bundles a copy of the Task Force interim report of the fifteenth of June, a report of the thirtieth of July twenty twenty, and then a supplementary report, which I think has been variously referred to as the final report?
Yeah, I think probably the final report predates this. The supplementary report really is supplementary, but the final report.
And that's the twenty-eighth of September, all right. And again, the Royal Commission asked you to provide a brief update on any responses to or actions taken by the South Australian Government and/or the department specifically to address findings and/or recommendations made by the Safeguarding Task Force report? And you've set that out in the table, is that right? At pages twenty-two, sorry, twenty-three through to twenty-five of your statement?
Yes.
And that is intended to be in summary form, do I take it?
Yes, it is.
All right. Now, in terms of the Safeguarding Task Force, were you involved in establishing the task force?
No, I was not. The Minister and the Cabinet established the task force. I was involved in assisting after the decision had been made in some administrative, well, not me, but the, the department was in administrative roles of ensuring sitting fees, et cetera.
And what was the composition of the task force? It wasn't all government official?
No, it was made up of people with lived experience. It was jointly chaired by a former director, Executive Director of Disability SA and now Disability Advocate, who is based in the Office of the Public Advocate, Dr David Cordry, and Ms Kelly Vincent, who has lived experience and is a former member of the South Australian Parliament.
All right. Now, the Commissioners have in volume D, behind tab two, a copy of the interim report, that's the first report, and that extracts the Safeguarding Task Force Terms of Reference on page twenty of twenty-two, is that right? Next page. So they're the terms of reference?
Yes.
Now, who was responsible for developing the terms of reference?
I believe they were responsible, they were developed by the Ministers in conjunction with Dr Cordry and Ms Vincent, but I can't tell you for sure, I'm sorry.
And as a member of the task force, what was the process undertaken by the task force to address the matters identified in the terms of reference? How did you go about that task?
Well, it was during Covid, so the meetings were virtual. There were, the Dr Cordry and Ms Vincent as co-chairs did a number of things and, look, my memory, you just have to bear with me on my memory, Senior Counselor, please, but there was, there was regular meetings of the task force that worked through issues. People, members of the task force put in papers and thoughts about what they thought were issues that needed to be examined. There was a special, separate workshop with people with lived experience on the subject and there was also a consultation session, sessions, undertaken by Dr Cordry and Ms Vincent going around and meeting with various people and talking through. And I think they took, they also took public submissions.
And some of the work that the task force did focused specifically on the NDI, but also the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission, is that right?
That's right.
So its focus was not limited to looking at the response solely of the South Australian Government or the department, is that right?
No, its response was based on working out what safeguarding gaps there were and then the, who was responsible for that was secondary part process to establishing what the gaps were.
And the task force concluded ultimately that there were fourteen safeguarding gaps and they produce Commissioners in the supplementary report, which is behind tab five in this bundle at page twenty-two and twenty-three. We turn to that. So you recognise those as the safeguarding gaps, all right. One of the issues that arose in the course of the task force work was what does vulnerability and what does a vulnerable participant mean, is that right?
Yes.
And has that work of the task force informed the way in which South Australia has engaged with the NDI and the Quality and Safeguards Commission on the vulnerable participants' framework?
Very much so, and in fact, the, during the process, it was very clear that people with disability did not want to... did not want to be perceived. And there was a very strong theme in South Australia at the time because the media reports were all about vulnerability. And there was some concern about ensuring that that was it was not assumed that because you had a disability that you were vulnerable, that that was actually going backwards in in time. And so the safeguarding task force actually grappled with that concept quite a lot about how do you how do you identify vulnerability without labelling everybody as vulnerable, given particularly the circumstances of Ms Smith, that did not fall into the classical definitions of vulnerability, shall we say.
Now, in the time that we have, I can't take you through all the safeguarding gaps, but I want to ask about two in particular. The first is in relation to advocacy. And in the report that you have, the supplementary report, the question of capacity development and advocacy was discussed at page 19 and page 20. Can I ask you to look at 5.5 capacity development and advocacy?
I'll need it to be brought up, sorry. Yes.
And the task force says in the second paragraph there, the participant or their family needs a quote "go-to" person in the system. We have identified in the absence of a case manager or social worker that the support coordinator is the closest thing to exercising the role. And we've discussed that earlier today.
Yes.
And over the page, it says, many people have spoken, sorry, many people we have spoken to have said that they've tried to make use of advocacy agencies, but they're fully booked and usually cannot help or can only help on a superficial basis. It may well be asked why advocacy is necessary when the NDIS and the Commission offer an array of personnel all tasked with assisting the individual to get what they need from the NDIS. In practice, the participant often feels confused and disempowered before this system and needs, quote, "a friend who is on their side."
Yes.
So in terms of the observations there, do you agree that the participant and the family needs a go-to person in the system or a friend who is on their side?
I do agree that people need a way to navigate the system, and ideally, a single point of contact would be the best way to achieve that.
And does that presently exist in any of the systems in South Australia?
I can't speak on behalf of the NDIS and the NDIA, but my understanding is is not. When you say any of the systems, Senior Counsel, we're not talking about the whole of the state of South Australia.
No, just focus on the systems that we've been talking about, which is people who receive services from South Australia or receive accommodation.
So within our accommodation services, yes, there is. There is a service coordinator that I spoke of earlier. There is one per 25 clients whose sole role it is to be that single point of contact. Yes.
Has there been any evaluation of that process?
It's a new process. We've not at the valuation stage yet, but it will there will be a valuation further on, yes.
And in terms of that evaluation, will that be informed by the families and the participants who identify the need for a go-to or a friend on their side?
Absolutely, I can't see another way to evaluate it.
The second issue, which was raised, which seemed to attract some debate, was the community visitor scheme.
Yes.
And if I can ask you to turn back to page 17 and 18, there's a discussion of the community visitor scheme.
Yes.
And that says in the second paragraph, the state, reference to South Australia, no longer has a funding relationship with non-government agencies, and the state's need to work within its responsibilities rather than venture into the domain of the Commonwealth. The future role of the community visitor scheme has to accommodate the roles and functions of the NDIA and of the Commission under the Commonwealth NDIS Act. And then, under the current arrangements, the South Australian Community Visitor Scheme has the power to visit DHS-run accommodation. And then it goes on to say what the limits are. Now, it's the case, isn't it, that in South Australia, there is a fairly significant debate about why the state has stepped back from a community visitor scheme? You agree with that?
I agree that there's a debate. I don't agree that the state has stepped back from the community visitor scheme. The state is actually very committed to a community visitor scheme. And as a result of advice that the state received and it had was had very little option other than to take, the Disability Services Act no longer applied, and therefore that reduced the scope of the community visitor scheme into group homes, which was its traditional base, that were undertaken by the NDIS. To try to partially redress that, the state, and I know because I was the proposer, sought to to have the a delegation from the the public advocate to provide more access to areas outside of state-run facilities. And in addition to that, what the state has done is, and it's partly in response to the Adult Safeguarding Unit, is to expand the role of the Adult Safeguarding Unit, which has a different ability on report, but actually has powers to to do things based on somebody having a complaint of abuse. We've also set out to have arrangements between the Adult Safeguarding Unit and the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission, obviously. And the state of South Australia is committed to a community visitor scheme and believes that one visiting things within on the purpose of of being arms and legs for the regulatory function of the NDIS Commission should be under the auspices of the regulatory of the NDIS Commission, but also has in response to discussions about an opt-in system for those who particularly for those who would never previously have had access to a community visitor scheme in the first place, is seeking to try to establish a virtual community visitor scheme that people can reach out to. That's a work in progress, and I have an agreement with the NDIS Commission that we'll work closely to try to make that work together.
All right, I just want to take some of those points in turn. It's a case, isn't it, as you're aware, that there's no national community visitor scheme under the auspices of the Quality and Safeguards Commission?
I am aware of that.
And you would have heard that Graham Head has said, notwithstanding he's leaving his role and he can't bind a predecessor that he sees merit in there being a national system.
Yes.
But you also heard him say that in the absence of a Commonwealth scheme, that some states have continued to operate their community visitor schemes.
Yes.
And you've heard him say, Mr Head, that he doesn't see that there's any impediment from his perspective in the states continuing to operate those schemes. That's what he said.
I have heard him say that, yes.
And to the extent that if there is an impediment in South Australia, is it right to understand that the impediment is based on a legal opinion?
Yes, it is.
And nothing else?
I don't know how to answer that, Senior Counsel. It's based on an opinion that they're not constitutional power, so that depends on whether you think that's nothing else, yes.
Let me put this to you. Can I put this?
Yes.
But for the legal opinion, from your perspective, there would be no impediment to South Australia continuing its community visitor scheme, is that right?
That's been the basis of of the history of the decision-making, yes.
All right. So if if you were not shackled by a legal opinion, would it be the case that a community visitor scheme could continue in South Australia?
The scheme would have continued the way that it was, yes.
Right. And you accept, don't you, that different lawyers sometimes have different opinions and different views?
Sometimes.
About the operation of the law? You self have been a lawyer?
Yes, I've never practised, Senior Counsel, but yes, I accept that lawyers have different opinions. When they get to be very senior, though, that does bind.
Right. And you have been provided with a summary of the Commonwealth's legal advice, is that right?
Yes.
And are you aware of what steps have been taken between the respective legal officers of the relevant Commonwealth agency and your department to resolve the legal differences?
No, I am not. I know that there's things under consideration, but that is not within my department, Senior Counsel.
And do you accept a legal debate about the operation of section 109 or other provisions of the Constitution should not be an impediment to protecting the safety and wellbeing of vulnerable participants?
I'm not sure that I'm not sure that's a question that can fairly be put.
All right, I withdraw that.
Thank you.
If the legal issues can be resolved, would South Australia be open to revisiting and reconsidering the operation of its community visitor scheme?
I would say that I also do agree with Commissioner Head that the community visitor scheme as it was designed is is not of a modern nature. It was designed to be an institutional visiting scheme, that's the history of which it came out of. It was designed to enter houses at the behest of the service provider, and it never had access to private houses and was really a role to have oversight of a service. It was a regulatory role in many respects. I think that bearing in mind the circumstances of moving from 16,000 people with disability supports in South Australia to more like 40,000, and that's mirrored across the country, that it's important to consult with people with disability about what such a scheme would look like and how it is respectful in terms of its its availability, rather than presuming that it is to come in and check. Because that is that's part of the debate that the Safeguarding Task Force had. And and I think, as you said, as you would know, Senior Counsel, Ms Robinson says that, sorry, His Honour said that there was there was no guarantee that somebody would be allowed in, so so how do you make that the case? And I think that there is much to be said for natural supports. And so part of the the point of an adult safeguarding unit is to try to encourage people to come on behalf of others, as well as have people speak themselves. Part of the point of a virtual visiting scheme would be to do that as well, having access to we're preparing media guidelines about how people are portrayed, because I think that's a very important part of community attitudes towards natural safeguarding. So it's working through that and talking with people with disabilities about what does a modern social connection visiting scheme vis-à-vis and and/or a regulatory scheme look like in a new era? Because there is, if it's if it's performing the old regulatory scheme, then it's a regulation role, it's not actually going to get it would never have reached Anne-Marie Smith, and it's not going to get to a wide range of people with disability who may want to have social connections through some forms. So I think there is a design issue. I agree strongly with Commissioner Head, and he and I have had many conversations about that in in attempts to try to sort this this issue in in ways that we can work around different legal opinions.
Let me put this to you. Without the community visitor scheme, the issues that James and Victoria sought to bring to the attention of the department, and the department's failing to address those matters may never have come to light. Do you accept that?
I accept that. And I also accept that there is a new advocacy scheme in South Australia that would hopefully replace that function, as well as a systemic disability advocate that was specifically put there to replace that function as the CVS role withdrew out of that area.
All right, thank you, Commissioners, those are my questions.
Thank you very much. I shall ask the Commissioners if they have any further questions of you, Ms Boswell. First, I'll ask Commissioner Bennett.
No, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner McKeown?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Now, does Mr Simpson, do you have any questions you wish to put to Ms Boswell?
Chair, I am conscious of the time. I had intended to ask for a brief adjournment to see constructions on that topic, but I think I can indicate that I have no questions at this time.
Well, I don't want to constrain you. If you think that there is something of potential significance and you need a few minutes to do that, that can we can do that. In fact, I think that the best course for us to adopt in any event is if not to take the luncheon adjournment, then to adjourn for about 15 minutes, just to make sure there are no loose ends to be tied up, and then to return, and then that will conclude the hearing. Can I just check with Ms Eastman as to whether she's comfortable with that call?
Yes, I look, I certainly am. Chair, we have also circulated some proposed directions to parties, and I hope that those directions have reached you as well.
They have. What I suggested is now 1:10 Adelaide time. If we reckon the, let us say, at 1:30 Adelaide time, and I imagine we will not need more than a few minutes, if Mr Simpson has anything he wishes to put, then we can discuss that at the time. We will deal with the directions, and if there are any closing remarks to be made, which I anticipate will be very brief.
Thank you, Chair.
So we'll adjourn until 1:30 Adelaide time.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Ms Eastman.
Commissioners, I understand that there's no questions, so Ms Boswell, who's very kindly returned to the witness box, could be excused.
Ms Boswell, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. I'm sorry, we kept you over two successive days, but thank you for the assistance that you have provided to us.
Thank you, Chair.
And Commissioners, a notice requiring Mr Stuart Dodd to attend the Royal Commission had been issued. We did not require him to give evidence in person. The Commissioners have a copy of his statement, so if he could formally be excused as well.
Yes, that can be done.
And apart from that, I think that concludes the presentation of the evidence for public hearing 14, subject to the proposed directions, which I think now all parties have had an opportunity to read, and I understand are agreed. Thank you.
Yes, all right. Well, I have a copy of, at least I think I have a copy of the proposed directions. But before reading them, I note that they include an oral hearing which will be held on the 20th of August 2021, and that will be a hearing at which oral submissions will be heard by the Commissioners who have participated in this hearing, but there will be provision for written submissions as well. These then are the directions that are to be made. First of all, dealing with questions on notice and additional material. One, any witness who took questions on notice during this hearing should provide his or her answers in writing to the Office of the Solicitor assisting the Royal Commission by 18 June 2021. Those answers should be targeted and concise and not address additional or unnecessary matters. Two, counsel assisting the Royal Commission may tender those responses into evidence. Three, in addition, given that during this hearing, it has become apparent that some documents may have been overlooked in responding to notices issued by the Royal Commission, parties should ensure that further checks are conducted to ensure that those notices have been fully complied with. I'll now deal with documents for tendering. Direction four, by 25 June 2021, counsel assisting the Royal Commission will provide a list of the documents she wishes to tender into evidence, including responses to questions on notice on a confidential basis to the parties with leave to appear at this hearing. Five, parties with leave to appear should advise the Office of the Solicitor assisting by 2 July 2021 if they wish to suggest any additional documents for tendering by counsel assisting. At the same time, they should identify any parts of those documents that they consider need to be removed before the documents are made public. Six, counsel assisting will tender those documents into evidence, which she considers appropriate, in chambers by 6 July 2021. I'll deal now with submissions. Direction seven, counsel assisting the Royal Commission will prepare written submissions following this hearing by 23 July 2021. These submissions will be provided on a confidential basis to parties with leave to appear, to the witnesses who gave evidence, and to any organisation that received a procedural fairness letter from the Office of the Solicitor assisting the Royal Commission in preparation for this hearing. Eight, any responses to the counsel assisting Eight, any responses to the counsel assisting submissions should be sent to the Office of the Solicitor Assisting by 13 August 2021. Those responses should be concise and not include any additional evidence. After receiving all of the written submissions, there will be a short hearing for oral submissions, which will be scheduled on 20 August 2021. That hearing will be conducted virtually.
Chair.
Those are the directions, yes.
Thank you, Chair, could I just ask already for an amendment to the directions? So direction number one, the date, I think you said the 18th of June, there has been
I did.
discussions with the parties, and we had all agreed on 22 June, so could that amendment be made, please?
Yes, that amendment can be made, thus, direction one will have the date of 22 June 2021 substituted for 18 June 2021. Thank you. Ms Eastman, is there anything further from you?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I want just to make some very brief remarks at the close of this hearing. Before we do adjourn the hearing that has been held this week, it is important for the commissioners to express their gratitude to all of the witnesses who have given evidence this week. This includes the representatives of public agencies and authorities whose evidence has been very helpful to the Royal Commission. We particularly wish to thank Victoria and James and Karen Rogers for being prepared to share their experiences and those of Mitchell and Daniel with the Royal Commission, and indeed, with the Australian community. As their evidence shows, and as the evidence that we have heard at other hearing shows, it often takes great courage and determination to parents or guardians of people with disability to ensure that the people they love, but who cannot speak easily for themselves, are kept safe and free from violence, abuse, neglect, or exploitation. It also takes determination and courage to give evidence of difficult and sometimes traumatic experiences in a public forum such as the Royal Commission or a hearing of the Royal Commission. Victoria, James, and Karen Rogers have done so, and through them, we have been able to learn about Mitchell and Daniel. Victoria described Mitchell, her nephew, as having a very loving, caring, and humorous personality. It was very clear that Mitchell is very much loved. Karen described Daniel as just beautiful. He is a lovely man who is very gentle and sweet. We saw pictures of Daniel and a video which showed how much he is loved. Mitchell and Daniel are entitled, like every other Australian, to realise to the full their potential for a rewarding and fulfilling life. The Royal Commission's publicly stated intention to hold hearings into case studies of alleged violence, abuse, neglect, or exploitation attracted some mixed responses within the disability community. Some see it as a welcome opportunity to hold perpetrators of violence or abuse to account. Others have worried that case studies might reinforce perceptions of people with disability as victims, rather than as independent people able to exercise choice and control over their own lives. And in the evidence today, we heard some discussion of those issues. The case of Anne-Marie Smith illustrates this dilemma. I do not need to restate the tragic circumstances of her death, but the evidence given by Brooke has allowed us to see Ms Smith as an individual with her own personality and priorities, who was loved by her family and friends. Her death will not be in vain. The failures of the systems intended to support Ms Smith have been the catalyst, as we have heard, for much soul-searching among administrators and policymakers. One objective of this hearing is to ensure, as far as possible, that the lessons are not only learned, but are acted upon, so that nothing similar can ever again occur in this country. I want to conclude by expressing our thanks to counsel, Ms Eastman, Ms Bennett, and Dr Bennett, for their commitment and skill in presenting the evidence. Given that Commissioner Bennett has participated in this hearing, we now have a trifecta for Bennetts. We're also deeply grateful to the Office of the Solicitor Assisting the Royal Commission for their indefatigable work in preparing for the hearing and in conducting the hearing. Many others have contributed to the orderly and efficient conduct of this hearing, including our corporate branch, which has done a great deal of work behind the scenes, the councillors who provide invaluable and much appreciated support to witnesses and to others, the Ausland interpreters, and those who are responsible for producing the real-time transcript under often impossibly swift circumstances. As this list indicates, preparation for and conduct of a hearing like this is a truly major undertaking. We'll be doing it all again in 12 days' time in Brisbane, COVID-19 committing, at a further hearing on people with cognitive disability in the criminal justice system. Mercifully, this hearing is scheduled to last for only two days. We shall now adjourn.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.